Good evening, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Cusca, your superintendent. I want to start by thanking the Board of Education, the District Clerk, Dr. Ritter, Dr. Tack, Dr. Brown, Dr. Wylian, Mr. Gonzalez, and Assistant Superintendent Steinberg for quickly coming together to have this forum. I'm going to take a few minutes just to frame the conversation. This forum was put together for the purpose of giving families and staff the opportunity to share their opinions with the Board and with the administration regarding our best response to the predictions of growing COVID-19 rates during the holiday season. And Dr. Ritter and Dr. Tack, join us again. And we'll take just a few minutes to share updates since the last presentation. Dr. Wylian and Mr. Gonzalez from the Duchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health are here to speak to the testing requirement for schools, open to yellow and orange zones, and the county capacity for that. I do want to take this opportunity to tell the community how incredibly responsive the department's staff has been through this pandemic. They pick up every call, they answer every question, they provide valuable guidance for us. I also want to acknowledge Dr. Ritter and Dr. Tack for taking the time to join us in these discussions and also meet with us as we prepare to reopen and as we continue to make decisions in this changing landscape. So I want to add that we have received some emails from people that were not able to call in tonight. With their permission, those will scroll over so that everyone can read them as calls are coming in. If there are breaks during calls, we can read them aloud. But I wanted those to be seen as well for people that couldn't be here. And another factor to look at and why we're having the Department of Behavioral and Community Health here is because of the requirement to test students and staff if we find ourselves in a yellow or an orange zone. So I wanted them to be here to address the infrastructure that would be needed. And as a reminder of this time, Yellow Zone requires public and private schools to randomly test 20% of all people on campus over a two-week period immediately following the announcement of Yellow Zone designation. And Orange Zone is public and private schools can only open for in-person learning if all students and staff undergo COVID-19 testing, and then 25% of all people on campus are randomly tested every week. So my last comment I want to make before I let the others speak is that I want to say clearly that no decision regarding a planned pause has been made if after hearing your feedback, we decide to continue in person as we have. It's important that everyone understand that if the infection rates that we've been told to act may find ourselves unable to staff the building and have to pivot to remote instruction with very little notice. So that's happened to us already. There have been cases where we only need to close for one day and we're able to staff to return the next day after cleaning, and other cases where it's been two weeks for one grade level or two weeks for the whole school. So this has to do with just a lack of substitutes for staff that are quarantined. So we can absolutely continue to stay open for in-person instruction as long as possible, but I did want people to understand that if those rates go up, we may see more of those, you know, temporary closing pivoting to remote that we know are really inconvenient for families. So we just want you to know that. So with that said, I do want to give Dr. Ritter and Dr. Tack a few minutes just to talk about what they're seeing in hospitals and in the community, you know, and share a bit of that information with us, and then also asking our Commissioner of the County Department to speak to the same and also testing.
Thank you very much. I guess I'll start. Can everybody hear me all right? Okay, so Dr. Tack and myself have been involved in this from the very beginning, and we've seen the ups and downs of it. And presently, in the last few weeks, as it's happened nationally, we've started to see the new peak in this area. I'll just say that, you know, we are, we're at the hospital, so we see the more serious cases that are being diagnosed who then come into the hospital for admission. That being the case, regardless of whether the percentages are small or large, if there's enough people who get diagnosed with this, then what occurs is the system can be overwhelmed by the number of patients coming into the hospital. In addition, you know, our schools have been, at least in our district, our school has been extraordinarily safe. When we look around at the other school districts, you know, and Dr. Tack will amplify this, you know, Pine Plains is closed, Red Hook High School is closed, Arlington School District is closed. All of these have happened, as I've just said, in that they've had so many cases occur at once that they weren't able to make up the staffing and the quarantining, and so they closed. And in the case of Arlington, that actually happened in the middle of the day. So with an abrupt transition. I'll say that, you know, also that the kids are not immune, but they don't get as sick as the adults. And I've gone to the American Academy of Pediatrics website, and, you know, in the last two, from the 5th of November to the 19th of November, we've seen 28% increase in childhood diagnosis and kids below the age of 17 being diagnosed with COVID. That's the, the real number is 128,000 new cases, and there's been over a million cases of kids getting infected. So it's, you know, regardless of whether or not, you know, the extreme illness and the fatalities are extremely low, but our concern, Dr. Tack and I and the whole, the district there, as we've met every week, is the concern that the kids can bring it home to a family. Although the safest environment, you know, might be for us when we're all gowned and gloved, and certainly when the kids are in school and there's appropriate social distancing and there's masks, the problem really becomes when they go home and they take off their mask. And not only are their parents there, but their grandparents, and some of them have chronic illnesses. So our concern is really not just the child, but it's the rest of the family that are impacted by their illness. In addition, and Dr. Tack will also amplify this, we kind of wanted to see what would happen with Halloween. We know that everybody is tired, they want to get together. Thanksgiving is going to be an amplification of that, and then there's the Christmas break. Our concern is that if what we're seeing represents a spike from Halloween and the timing is appropriate, then the concern is, is that the next surge from Thanksgiving and Christmas will be even larger and, in fact, more deadly. And so we want to avoid that if possible on the idea that we are already having the kids be at home for the holidays. Although the burden is tremendous on the families, especially at the elementary school age, it's clear that a planned pause and the fact that the kids are already home and the families are already dealing with the kids being home for Thanksgiving and then for Christmas may make the idea of a pause more, you know, more applicable in this situation in that it can be integrated into the time that they're already at home. I'm going to stop here and let Dr. Tack take over, and we can add more comments as we go along. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Can everybody hear me as well?
Yes.
So first of all, thank, thank you to the Hyde Park School District Administration for the hard work they're doing, trying to educate our children in the community in such a tough time, and to the Board of Education for their incredible efforts. I think I've told you before, I'm a former school board member, spent six years on the Kingston Board of Education, and I understand the difficulty you face with these challenges and your stewardship. That said, I was asked, have been working with Dr. Ritter, to try to advise the district on how to best navigate through this pandemic. And this is something that none of us have ever completely experienced before, and quite honestly, hopefully, never again. But right now, we're in the middle of a very challenging time. The last two weeks, two and a half weeks, three weeks now after Halloween, have been a test. We've gone through, we went through the spring, we made it through the first surge with a lot of pain, a lot of suffering, a lot of shutdowns and businesses closed. I don't have to remind you all. And we got to the summer and New York was looking good, and we were kind of thinking, what were those other states thinking? And we were preparing for that second surge, hoping it wouldn't come. And unfortunately, it did come, and the numbers started to increase. And now we are three weeks post-Halloween, and I'm, my group is an, in fact, multi-specialty group with four infectious disease doctors covering Vassar, the Hudson Regional, Kingston, and Northern Duchess. And I will tell you that, just to give you some examples, Kingston has activated its surge plan and reopened units for COVID-only. Northern Duchess has a 300% increase in cases in the past two weeks. Vassar, which typically in the summertime and until the early fall, we were running COVID census positive patients of four, five, three at one point, are now in the 30s, with 60 more what we call PUIs, patients under investigation. That, if you put that together, it's almost 100 patients in the hospital right now that we're evaluating and dealing for possible COVID. Another floor has been shut down and turned into a COVID unit yesterday. And this is the reality. It's not a, this is not a hoax, it's not a scare tactic. It's, it's the reality we face. Halloween was the first test we faced. And quite honestly, not, and this is not about the people of Hyde Park, it's about what happened, New York State and in general, in the country, we failed. The numbers have skyrocketed. Nothing I'm saying to you is news. You only have to turn on any news station in America to see what's going on. Every day we create, we pass new records for numbers of cases and new records for numbers of people dying. It's not news to you. The question becomes, what is the best thing to do for the children and what is the best thing to do for the community? And that's, that's the balance that you have to weigh. It's our opinion, my opinion, and it's what I'm, and I voice it, and I, it's important to understand, I don't have any skin in this game. My children don't go to Hyde Park, or my, my kids have graduated school and they're off in their careers. I'm here just to help guide and give you advice after doing this for 25 years. The, what we're seeing in the community is children, some are symptomatic, most aren't, but children, especially young children, have a very hard time not socializing in places. They mix, high school, junior high school kids mix, high school kids mix. They go home, and the next thing we see is their parents, their aunts, uncles, grandparents, or other family members coming into the emergency rooms. We are literally, as you know, weeks away from the first vaccines shipping. Realistically, the spring into the early summer from having an adequate supply to vaccinate a critical mass in the country to make the next school year a normal year. But right now, we're in a point where we're at a tipping phase. If you remember when we, Mario Cuomo, I'm sorry, Andrew Cuomo, talked about bending the curve. The idea of bending the curve wasn't that we were going to eliminate the disease, it was that we were going to stop it from crushing the healthcare system. This morning, I saw very frightening pictures. Refrigerator trucks pulling up to hospitals in Texas and in Dakotas, and quite honestly, in New York. My son is a third-year resident in medicine at Winthrop Hospital on Long Island, and they have a refrigerator truck for excess morgue outside their hospital again. It hadn't been there since early, early July, late June, and that's back, and now they're back. And he called me this morning in tears, leaving the ICU, having intubated, putting four patients on ventilators last night. And this is what we don't want to have happen. So we're trying to So we're trying to find this balance for the community between educating students and protecting their families. And also your teachers, your faculty, your staff, your administration, your employees, your, your, your groundskeepers, your kitchen staff, your bus people, everybody is at risk here. And so our, the recommendation is to have a timed pause after Thanksgiving. We know what's coming. If, I mean, if I could, it's a better bet here than I could go and, you know, play blackjack at a casino. I get much better odds that two weeks from now, we're going to be seeing a bigger surge in our emergency rooms and in the hospitals, in the ICUs. And the system is being stressed. Now, can it handle it? Right now, it's still at a level where it's manageable. It's, we want to keep it that way. And we want to keep your neighbors, your families, your relatives out of the hospitals, out of the ICUs, off the ventilators and get them to vaccines. So we can all get back to our life. So we don't have to have Zoom meetings. We can have in-person, in-person Board of Education meetings, in-person public hearings, in-person dinners, Thanksgiving dinners. I am, I was incredibly frightened when I saw the number of people that were being cleared by TSA every day in the last two days to fly for Thanksgiving. The CDC is telling you to stay home, people, they're not listening. It's just a reality. So I'm here to give you my, our best advice. Believe me, and I mean this with all my heart, the last thing in the world I wanted to do is tell you to take your children out of the buildings. But the only thing that, that trumps that is having them go to funerals. I'll answer questions or you want to go to the health department or whatever you'd like to go to.
Thank you so much, Dr. Tac and Dr. Ritter. You know, at this time I would like our Commissioner of the Duchess County Department of Behavioral Community Health. And, and I believe that Mr. Gonzalez is also here from the department to speak a little bit about the testing. I'll, I'll say there's, there are districts who are conducting their own testing in yellow zones around the state. We would have the capacity to ask for free tests, but it would require being certified, basically, you know, setting up a clinic. And it would require staff. So, so of course, we're not really in the business of setting up clinics. That, that would be new for us. But in addition, we currently have three vacancies for registered nurses right now, just for our normal building staff that we cannot find registered nurses. So from a practical standpoint, we really couldn't set up our own center should we become a yellow or in an orange zone. So I really wanted the department to share with us a little bit about what's happening in the county and, and, you know, how, how that might happen and any other news they have to share. So thank you, Commissioner.
Sure. Thank you for having me tonight. Again, I would sort of reiterate what my colleagues, Dr. Ritter and, and Dr. Tac had mentioned. Again, I'm just going to give you a quick overview of what we're seeing in the community. I will tell you that roughly a month, month and a half, two months ago, what we were averaging in terms of new cases per day were roughly between five and 10 per day. And for the past week, we have been cresting at 68 cases per day. And when you look at, at the region, our positivity rates, we're doing close to 2,300 tests in Duchess County a day. And a chunk of that, you know, is through institutions of higher learning, such as Vassar and, and Maris. But nonetheless, the positivity rate in the region is over 3.5%. I, I think most recently it was 3.8%. And so you're seeing a significant uptick in cases within the Hudson Valley and throughout New York. I will tell you in speaking with regard to Duchess County, when we were planning in the summer, when colleges were planning to open, when schools K through 12 were planning to open, one of our concerns was that these facilities and locations would be areas of where cases would amplify. And I will tell you that again, that is not what we are seeing. With some exception, you, you've heard in the news of like clusters related to parties thrown by college students off campus and so on and so forth. You know, oftentimes we identify those, we, we sort of institute containment efforts fairly quickly. And although the numbers are large, we really do not see a significant spillover into the general community. And that applies for the schools themselves. So K through 12, of all the school districts, over the past week, we have, we had a total of 19 cases smatted throughout all the school districts in Duchess. But of those 19 cases, there were 476 contacts. So you can just imagine what those cases, what type of impact that they have in terms of, of, of taking out, you know, fellow classmates as well as staff and putting them on quarantine and, and sort of interfering with the capacity of school districts to maintain their level, not only of staffing, but of educating their, their population. And so the other thing that we're seeing is that, again, you know, when you look at large clusters are not what's driving the case rates within the county. When you look at places like nursing homes, correctional facilities, they are probably like less than four to 5% of the total. What we're seeing is that in houses, in social settings and other community settings is where you're having cases. And the cases that you're identifying in the school setting are cases that, you know, of children who got exposed in their homes and boarded into the school. And when they were identified in the school, they were, they were dealt with fairly quickly. And I commend all the schools in this collaborative relationship that we've had with them. And, and it's working exceedingly well is that we identify these cases and we identify the contacts and we get them into our containment efforts. And what we have not seen is these cases enlarge into large clusters within the school districts. We're just not seeing it. So the data does not support the fact that, that schools are the drivers of, of, of cases in the community. And if you're looking purely at data and, and, and what's driving the numbers in the community is not the schools. And so I think what it comes down to is school districts in their calculus of determining whether they should stay open or, or go fully remote. The calculus is mainly depends on, you know, how many students you're going to have in a particular classroom and how many staff you're going to have there to actually do the teaching. From a public health standpoint, I think we've never entertained the idea of recommending school closures. And we've always felt that it, it should be an ongoing discussion and it should be something that's left to the superintendent, the school board and the community themselves in an ongoing discussion, even with a state ed department. But again, in terms of data that we could share with school districts around Duchess, you know, the problem is not the schools. With regard to testing, you know, you mentioned a couple of the things that are a requirement. Unfortunately, the, the, the state has put a, the onus actually on the schools to find a mechanism of, of testing students in the, 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 in the schedule that was already mentioned. Obviously depending on, on whether it's yellow, it's 20%, whether it's orange and, and red, it's 25%. And, and, and the schedule is, is codified by, by the, the state or guidelines. But again, the state has given strict guidance to the, the health department on what their expectation is. So whenever you are employing a testing strategy, you need a physician's order, you need a certified lab with a clear waiver, and you need qualified personnel to do that testing. And to, to us, all those things can be fairly done quickly with, with two exceptions. You know, I could write a standing order, we could share our clear waiver with the school districts. But the difficult issue that we're having is basically staff. You mentioned you were down three nurses, we're down five. We just, in this market, it's, it's, it's hard to find staff. And with our level of staffing, it's, it's, there is, we have no capacity to stand up a testing program. If there was staffing, we would be able to share our clear waiver and coordinate trainings and, and the like. The other big difficulty is that every test that's done, the state's expectation is, whether it's negative or positive, that it, 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 it enters into the state electronic reporting system. And to tell you the truth, if you're, if you're doing hundreds and thousands of tests on a regular basis, it's sort of like, to us is a, it's like a huge task. You need dedicated people taking these, this information and putting into the lab system because that is one of the requirements. And so, you know, we barely have the capacity to, to do, do the positives on a regular basis within the health departments. And now you're adding, you know, school testing, you know, without additional staff either or support. You know, it, it's hard for me to sort of envision, especially on a timely basis, putting up a, a, a testing program. But nonetheless, the state has shared with us some resources in terms of testing kits and cards. And we're looking at modalities where we can have agreements to, to bring that, for instance, the Avid Binex cards. We could use that as a mode of, of, of testing widely and we have sufficient numbers. But what we're trying to work out internally and with our partners is the staffing to get this done. And so we are actively looking at it. I, I will not say that, again, the, the issues and the difficulties are insurmountable. But especially in terms of two main ones, staffing and the data portion is, is quite complicated and a heavy lift. Because again, even the data portion, number one, you have to be certified, you need hint access. All that takes time and takes training. And we do, it's not like plug and play, get, you know, intern from college and they could have access to the state system. It just doesn't work like that. So again, while, you know, what I'm saying may be somewhat depressing, you know, we're looking at ways where we could be innovative and, and try to sort of stand up testing if the need arises and, and any one of our schools is designated within a yellow zone. And with that, I'll stop and entertain questions.
So just, I see another number. Is that Mr. Gonzalez or someone participating with a phone separate from video? Okay, Commissioner, I think you're muted, but maybe on purpose.
Yeah.
Mario is, is on the call and, and a lot of his efforts are, have been sort of coordinating with nursing home, adult care facilities and just collaborating with our partners.
Thank you. And thank you so much for being here. And Mario, thank you for having Commissioner here on all our behalf. So I want to thank everyone who's here on the panel and we want to open it up for questions. I know there's a queue, calls are, are being taken in the order that they're received. And, and I'm hoping that the scroll of email comments can roll, at least at the beginning, so people can see those. I'll mute myself. So there may be questions for the panel. So.
Might I make a, thank you, Commissioner. And that was expansive and detailed and excellent. And to, and I think Dr. Tac and I would amplify, you know, that we appreciate everything that was said. As what we want to point out is, you know, the, the 19 positive students, for example, who ended up with 476 contacts to track down. What we're perceiving is that the amplification of those positive students after a potential get together, as you mentioned, in the family setting, maybe fourfold or sixfold will increase the number of contact tracings, also fourfold or sixfold. It becomes almost insurmountable. And, you know, I think that's part of what we're pointing at and seeing. And, you know, we would love to have school testing occur on a regular basis. And we, but that's a work in progress. The logistics are daunting, both for the data collection and the testing. I will tell you that my own personal experience right now is that the other bigger organizations, LabCorp, Quest, BioRef, who have stepped in to do a lot of testing are doing a lot of the testing to the detriment of regular testing. In other words, to have the staff and do all of the work that, that you're mentioning for COVID testing, other labs that we would normally get back in four hours, which is the normal state guideline, are now taking 24 hours to come back. That's standard blood tests, chemistries, complete blood counts. And that's impacting our patient care as well. The idea that that would increase in, in the present surge even more so, you know, it's, it almost becomes insurmountable. And frankly, I think it terrifies us to see another big surge come. And I'll stop there. Thank you.
Again.
That is an excellent point because again, it's, it's not just COVID itself. It's just all, it's the entire capacity of laboratories to, to handle this uptick in COVID testing. And what we're seeing now is the fact that the turnaround times are also increasing, not just for COVID, but all, all other reportable diseases as well as, as regular. You know, it's unfortunate that chemistries are taking that long also.
So I want to take this opportunity to thank the Commissioner for being here. He does need to leave at six, so I don't want people to think he's rude when he just leaves. But he is here for, for a bit, for any questions that come in.
And thank you again, Commissioner.
So Commissioner, I have a question that Governor in his last, or earlier this week in one of his news conferences was pushing very hard that schools do not close. And does he have all this information of distress on the medical teams and situations going forward? Because he was pushing even harder, even if we're yellow, to go into 20% testing.
So again, it, it's hard to answer that question mainly because, again, the, the metric that was, was, was pushed on us as, as the necessary step or the necessary proof that we could have in-person class is that we test consistently and that we prove that we're heading in the right direction. But again, providing us test kits is not the only thing that the state can do. Because essentially, currently as it stands, there are multiple, multiple regions of New York that are currently in the yellow, orange and red zones. And a lot of the resources with regard to testing and test kits are focused on, on them. So even in our capacity to prepare and to prep up testing, it's all dictated by, number one, the, the supply chain, number one, and staffing. So while the Governor has said he doesn't want to close schools, he has imposed on the schools a, a testing regimen or requirement that again, with existing resources within local health departments and school districts, we're not able to meet. And.
Commissioner, can I ask you a question? I serve on the Ulster County Task Force for COVID with Dr. Smith and the, and the, and Pat Ryan, the county executive. And the challenge that we had was And the challenge that we had was, you just talked about 19 patients leading to 490 people for contact tracing. We got to a point, a breakpoint, early in the epidemic, pandemic, where the county health department couldn't realistically do contact tracing anymore. You hit a critical point where the transmission in the community becomes so rampant that the numbers become overwhelming. How close are you? How many cases can you handle and do legitimate contact tracing? If we were to have another event after Thanksgiving where you had, let's, you know, instead of 19, we had 40 across the entire county and their family members, and they all got together for Thanksgiving dinners, could the county realistically do contact tracing? In Ulster County, they gave up on it pretty early because of the numbers.
I want to jump in. I do want you to answer, but then I'm going to ask that we take the first call from the community.
That's an excellent question. You know, we are basically in the position that all our fellow county commissioners and health directors are in, which is the, the numbers are overwhelming. And so, we are almost there. You know, what we did in the spring is that, you know, within the identification for our first case, within three weeks, we had hundreds. And, you know, with one or two investigators, we just couldn't handle it. And so, we sort of pulled, you know, county staff, other departmental staff, volunteers, and we had a large cadre of over 30 or 40 people doing contact tracing. I don't believe at this time, because things were on pause and things were closed at that time, a lot of those volunteers, a lot of those personnel are in their regular jobs and duties. And so, we just don't have that pool to pull from. While, you know, this sort of seems like an insurmountable task, what we want to remind people is, in terms of public health interventions that have the greatest, you know, bang for the buck, if people know their status, okay, if they know they're positive and they're given a commissioner's order, you know, if you're positive, if you're symptomatic, if you are going to confinement for 10 days or you notify your contacts and they are quarantining, that is the majority of the battle with regard to containment efforts. You know, while contact tracing and all that is lovely, if they're able to do that, most of the heavy lifting is done. I will tell you that, again, the CDC put out a recent guidance that, understanding that, again, the system is going to be overwhelmed, and what we have to do is prioritize things like outbreaks in schools and facilities and make sure those clusters don't enlarge and spill over. And so, what we're doing right now is with the staff on hand and that we are available, we're trying to prioritize the cases in terms of which is high priority and focusing more of our efforts on those high priorities. And just hoping that, again, once people find out their notice, you know, the school districts are assisting us in providing that commissioner's orders. Providers, when they give a positive result, have to provide that commissioner's order. And so, hopefully, with that guidance and that initial educational document, that people will do the right thing in terms of confining their movements and notifying their contacts.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to take our first call. We have a lot of people waiting. So we are going to ask that those calls are limited to three minutes each, and we will be timing that to the best of our ability.
All right, I think we're in now. All right, Mr. Banks, go ahead with your question.
Yes, my name's Timothy Banks. My daughter is a freshman at Roosevelt High School. And I am just curious on what the plan is after the Thanksgiving break? If the district has decided to go remote or still hybrid?
So the question is what the plan would be if we, if the decision was for all remote versus hybrid?
Right.
So, yeah, go ahead.
I mean, do you guys have a decision yet or no?
Well, we're having this forum tonight to hear from the community, to see, you know, where people are at and also to hear from the experts tonight. So there will be a decision made and shared out with everyone.
Okay. All right, that was pretty much my question.
Thank you.
All right. All right, and this is Melissa?
Yes.
Go ahead, Melissa.
Hi, Aviva. First, I'd like to thank the district for everything you've been doing to keep children and teachers safe at school. The challenges you've encountered this year is just unbelievable. I'm a mother of three at North Park. And as you approach the decision to close schools, I just would like you to take this into consideration. Last Thursday, Robert Redfield, CDC Director, said we should be making data-driven decisions when we talk about what we're doing for schools. And he's quoted to say, "Today, there's extensive data that confirms K through 12 schools can operate with face-to-face learning safely and responsibly." "The infections we've identified in schools, when they've been evaluated, were not acquired in schools. They were acquired in community and in the household." He went on to say that one of the safest places that children K through 12 can be right now is in school. "It's important that you not make an emotional decision and feel pressure from other district closures and that you keep as many children in school as possible." Now, I'm not naive to the fact that when COVID cases are identified, that it could require multiple faculty members to be quarantined and therefore result in the possibility of an abrupt school closure. But I feel the benefits of children being in school outweigh that. I would like to point out that with the exception of North Park, all of the other elementary schools are open and operating right now. And in the district's reopening plan, it states, "Schools will close if the regional infection rate is greater than 9% using a seven-day average after August 1st." As of today, Duchess County's positive, percent of positive on the seven-day average is at 3.2%, which is a pretty big difference. Furthermore, if locations where community spread is occurring, such as indoor dining and gyms, can be open for operation, it makes absolutely no sense to have schools closed. The CDC is not recommending school closures today. And in fact, in the spring, they didn't recommend school closures either. So in closing, I urge you to follow the guidance provided by the CDC. I urge you to make data-driven decisions. I urge you to follow the guidelines created in the district's own reopening plan and keep schools open. Thank you.
Might I make a comment, Aviva?
Yes, thanks.
So I have read the same information, and I think Dr. Tac and I are on the same, hopefully, on the same page. And we support the kids going to school. Neither of us, none of us for a minute, want to be seen as just, you know, going ahead and saying, "Close the schools," because we think it's a good idea to close the schools. What we're really talking about right now is not closing the schools. We're talking about a pause to assess the changes due to the holidays and see if that would drive up the positivity rate to the point where we would then have to close the schools for a much longer period of time. We're just looking at a pause. And if, you know, during that pause, if the numbers go down or stay down or things don't happen, I think Dr. Tac and I would have the best possible day if we were completely wrong. Absolutely. Then we could certainly just say, you know, we'll discontinue the pause and bring the kids back. But we're not, I don't think any of us want to close the schools. We want to take a pause to assess the impact of holidays that we've already been having an impact now. Also, I think that the science continues to move on. The numbers aren't always what they are supposed to be as we learn more about this disease. And truthfully, each district, each state is different. South Dakota, as you well know, has a 50% positivity rate, and they're still keeping their schools open. So, but we're looking at not only the safety of the children, we're looking at the safety of the families, the grandparents, the aunts, the uncles, those with chronic illnesses who sit behind those kids at the same dinner table. So not to close the school, we're only looking at a pause. And that pause is a short time, and it's an assessment time, and I'll stop there.
Thank you, Melissa and Dr. Ritter. We'll take our next call.
Okay, thank you. Melissa, you're on with group now.
Hello?
Yep, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Lauren Lyons. I have three first graders at Ralph R. Smith, who, in my opinion, have been doing amazingly well with being able to go to school even as little as two days a week. I have a daughter who goes in the 1211 program four days a week. Would it, I know that you're thinking of shutting down till January 15th, but would it be an option to shut down for like a week or two after Thanksgiving to kind of give a buffer time? And then maybe after Christmas, closing down till January instead of making them lose six weeks' worth of learning where they're actually getting something out of it?
Thank you. Thanks for that input.
You're very welcome.
Hi, Aviva. I finally got the microphones to work, so if you have anything, I'm here.
Is this Mario Gonzalez?
Yes, speaking.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're going to take the next call, and it's good to know that you're here.
All right, Mr. Hunt, you are on with the group, I believe.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me and thank you for taking time out of your day to address the situation with us. I very much appreciate it. I am actually a father of two children in the school district. My daughter is at North Park, my son is at FDR. And I think, you know, from talking to other parents, I think one of the biggest problems we're facing with all this is the misunderstanding of what the protocol for the schools is and what it's supposed to be doing. Okay, so I'm sorry, I kind of got lost there for a second. So the misunderstanding, I think, comes in where people think that the protocol here is supposed to prevent kids from getting COVID. And that is very much not the case. Because the kids are in school two days a week, five and a half hours a day. But then when they leave school, they're in Target, they're in Stop &amp; Shop, they're trick-or-treating, they're at the Hyde Park roller rink, they're at, you know, the theater, they're all over the place. And that's where they're contracting COVID. I don't believe any of the evidence shows that they're contracting COVID in school. And the protocol, again, is not to prevent kids from getting COVID, it's to prevent the kids that do get it from spreading it to the other students. And I believe that's happening. And I believe this is a successful protocol and everything's going very well. Someone had mentioned earlier that there were 19 cases in all of the districts in Duchess County. There are 46,000 students in this county. So that means the positivity rate is .041. And even in our district, we hear about one in Ralph R. Smith, one in North Park, one in Roosevelt, and just one, which means the protocol is working, which means the school classroom is the safest place for our kids to be right now. And I understand what's going on all over the place. And, you know, I'd like some clarification on a couple of things. One, you know, one of the, I believe it was Dr. Tac, had said that Northern Duchess sees a 300% increase in patient intake. Well, 300% sounds like a big scary number, but it's not scary if it was one and now it's three. That's a 300% increase. So I'd like to, what are the actual numbers for that? You know, and we're talking about freezer trucks. You know, people are, you're not remembering that. The freezer truck, I mean, in New York City before COVID, there was 1,100 people dying a day in Manhattan, but they were allowed to have funerals. We can't have funerals right now, so they need someplace to store the relatives and the deceased. And that's what the freezer trucks are for. It's not indicative of how many people are dying. And I'm not saying this isn't a problem. I'm just saying that I believe that the school's protocol is working. We're doing a great job, the schools are doing a fantastic job of keeping the kids apart and keeping them safe. And I, you know, if I learned anything in the military is when you're winning a war, you don't retreat. You keep pushing forward. And, you know, give these kids, you know, the one thing they want that they haven't had in the last 10 months: hope. Hope that we're fighting the good fight and hope there's a light at the end of the tunnel. And I think the schools are doing a great job of that. Now, I understand the staffing issues, you have no control of that. But if we're going to make this decision based on fear, then it's the wrong reason. The kids definitely do better in school, and I believe my children are safe there. And I thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Can I say just one thing, really addressing capacity? You know, one of the things that I see in the community is that, yeah, you know, most people get COVID in the community from being in the community. But what we're talking about here is really capacity. Lab capacity, the ability to run testing and the like. Because the patient that you know has COVID won't spread it, you know, to anybody else, you know, if you know that they have it and you're able to contain it. So really, just, you know, we have to think about the ability to test, you know, how much capacity in the system is there to test? And that's really what we're talking about here.
Thank you, Mario.
All right, Deb Kravchuk is on the line now. Go ahead, Deb. Deb, are you still there?
Yes, I'm here. Someone else is talking.
Oh, they just finished up. You're listening on the screen. We're actually live right now, and live, you're actually on.
Okay.
Yep, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Deborah Kravchuk. I'm a science teacher at FDR. I'm currently in three high-risk medical groups. And as an essential worker, I must come into the building every day. If Duchess County's percentage rate is currently 3.44%, and there were four new cases reported today, I have three questions. Number one, does that make Duchess County a yellow zone? Number two, what is the actual percentage in Hyde Park? And number three, when will testing begin for teachers, staff, and students? Thank you.
So this is the former Biden, so I'll address the question in terms of designation of yellow zone. So again, it has to be understood that the metric, although I can explain it perfectly well like others, it's rolling average, it's a seven-day average, and it's over 10 days. And so, what is happening is occasionally we may exceed that number and we dip down that number. Every time we dip down below that metric, we reset.
Every time we dip down below that metric, we reset. And so that's why we, you know, while our neighbors may be with the yellow zone in Orange County, uh, we have yet to, 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 to see a yellow zone or a yellow zone designation within Duchess County. That does not say that the overall overarching number positivity rates within Duchess County as a whole is large. But again, what the state is using is the lowest, uh, the smallest area, whether it's a census trough or a zip code, and they're looking at rolling averages and over a longer period of time. And with regard to testing, again, I, I've touched on it previously, again, it's, we are sort of, uh, handcuffed by the overall capacity in terms of staffing as well as the supply chain for the availability of rapid testing and access through free testing. And so we're, we're exploring options within Duchess County and we're looking at how, you know, the county may assist, but we acknowledge that this is an ongoing issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, next caller, please.
All right, Ms. Goldman is on the phone now.
So, uh, my concern mostly with the, I understand the CTS because going virtual and everything. Um, I just was curious what the idea is to combat the social aspect of going virtual because, um, I mean, I understand kids are resilient and everything, but I do have a kindergartner and she's okay with live sessions sometimes, but it's only usually the first live session in the morning, the subsequent ones, there's always, um, constant question of when is it over, when is it over, when is it over? Um, and we're noting behavioral aspects to her that, um, weren't an issue last year when she wasn't doing, um, computer-based education. So, um, I don't know if there's more safety precautions we can take with the younger generation, but I really don't know if it's, if it's great for them to be on a virtual learning platform for that younger age, um, for long-term. I don't know, I, like, I just wonder what the balance is of, uh, keeping the social aspect there while also keeping the safety of the children with the pandemic.
Yeah, thank you. I, I, we've heard a lot and see a lot of need for that social interaction in person. Um, I'll just say, you know, we are social animals as humans, um, and we do need to be in each other's physical presence, so thank you for sharing that. Um, the, the next caller.
All right. I have Elizabeth on the phone, I'm sorry.
Hello? This is.
Yeah, go ahead, Elizabeth, sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. First, I want to thank you for having this forum and, um, due to the forthcoming imminent decision that you're gonna go to remote learning, um, till 1/15, which I understand, will the parents have the right to have a child repeat the grade if they feel that the child, uh, at home, um, since they're mainly being the teacher, if they feel it's necessary to have the child repeat, especially a child with special needs whose IEP is not being met, uh, with remote learning? It's not accusatory, it's just with special needs, I find that the remote learning is not working. The other thing is, it's not a question, it's more of an idea. Um, since, uh, COVID seems to be taking the second wave or it's imminent that it's coming between now and Christmas or thereafter, uh, the school may consider, um, working over the summer months. I'm sure the teachers will not relish that idea, but as a nurse that worked at Vassar and actually contracted COVID, we were not allowed to tra, take vacation during that time in the springtime. And I think if this, this COVID continues, this may be an option that maybe people will not like, but if it's something that will educate our kids or at least get them over the hump that we seem to be just staying in and not moving on. Uh, thank you again, and I'll hang up to give somebody else and I'll listen to your response on my cell phone. Thank you much, bye.
Thank you so much. Um, the first question, it, it is, um, one of the things that by regulation is the principal's decision about retaining students. Um, we've had some of those conversations with concerns, um, about regression and we have started, um, assessments this fall, getting a sense of, of what the baseline is for students and, and taking it from there. Um, those would be individual decisions, um, and we really would not want to be making unilateral decisions about, you know, all students with special needs or, or, um, any category of students needing to be retained since the pandemic really affected all learning for all students. So we're, we're looking at a big picture. Um, and then the other piece about summer, um, you know, certainly, um, there wouldn't be funding concerns about operating summer programs, um, but we have had summer programs in the past, um, and, you know, if we could come back in person, um, for summer, you know, certainly we would be looking at different options for that. So, thank you so much for your input and, um, we're ready for the next caller.
So might I throw a comment in until we hear the caller? So, uh, one of the things I want all the viewers to know is that the pause is not a closure again, but it's also a way to assess what is the normal lag time in the disease presentation. What we'll see on Thanksgiving won't really show up for two week, until two weeks after Thanksgiving. And so that's why we're concerned about watching and waiting during that particular period of time and, you know, Dr. Tac can chime in with that as well. Same thing for Christmas and New Years.
I'll wait for the next caller.
Okay, our next caller is Mathias and they're ready to go. Mathias, go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name is Carla. Uh, my daughter goes to Havilland Middle School. And first, I just want to say thank you, everyone, for being on tonight. Thank you for your expertise, uh, your feedback, your comments, it is so appreciated, uh, especially with, uh, everything that's going on. You know, a lot of us live in fear because we don't know what's expected from one day to the next. So, um, I also want to thank all the teachers. The teachers have been doing such a great job. I can't even begin to explain how, I, I don't know how they do it, you know, the remote and the law, the, being in class and doing the remote all at the same time, that must be so difficult. So definitely kudos to all the teachers, they deserve it. And, um, so my thing is, um, like, I'm gonna piggyback on Dr. Ritter. It's, it's, of course, it's about the children, but at the end of the day, it, the children come home to us. And, you know, I have respiratory problems. My daughter, who's in school, well, she's completely remote right now, but she has asthma, so she also is at a very high risk. And the risk of her bringing something home to me i- is very scary. And, you know, right now, Instacart has become my best friend. I am petrified to really go anywhere, I, I don't want to get anything, I don't want to contaminate her, or, you know, I just, i- it's scary. So my, my question would be, um, if, um, you know, we decided to go back 100%, you know, with everything that's still going on with the pandemic and everything, if, if documentation from the doctors were provided of her status and my status medical-wise, um, would this child be able to continue to stay remote? Uh, Arianna, um, is my daughter, I, I don't know if I should've said her name, but she's my daughter and, um, she is honor roll this quarter, so she has never been honor roll before. So remote for her is really working. So I just wanted to, you know, kind of, uh, see if that's, uh, if it's a chance, if, if it came to that, um, what would be like the next step for the children that do have respiratory problems, that live with someone that has respiratory issues?
Okay, they'll answer your question. I'm gonna, uh, move you off the call then, okay? They're gonna answer your question on the air. You're welcome.
Thank you. So certainly, um, the all-remote option is available to parents when we're in the hybrid or all-remote, um, this year. I, I think you were asking about if, if we are able to come back all in-person, five days a week, all students, you know, when that happens, could there continue to be an all-remote option? And, you know, at this point, at the best I can say is I don't know. Um, you know, we certainly learned a lot, people are working remotely in ways they never thought, so I don't want to take it off the table, but, um, certainly, you know, that would be, um, a real challenge, um, you know, that we'd have to look at. In the past, we did have students on home instruction with tutors when they were not well enough to attend school.
All right, and this is Doreen. Doreen, you go ahead and ask your question.
Um, I'm hearing Aviva talk, is she still talking?
Kind of delay on the, on the, in the real world, but in the real world, right here, you're actually live and everyone's waiting, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I don't want to take up too much of your time. Um, okay, hello, everyone. Um, I just want to say that I think the school district is doing a great job, but, um, my question is, there are children and parents that I work with on a weekly basis, and a lot of them are, uh, parents that both sets of parents have to work. These children are not getting, um, the acuteness that somebody would get if they had, uh, parents home with them. So I think it's really a fair with the way the grading system is going that, you know, children who have to fend for themselves are having disadvantages now. Um, the school district really, if we're gonna go completely remote, they really have to look at the way, uh, they are grading kids and the way in which the amount of work is being given to the children. And that's all I want to say.
All right, thank you very much, Doreen. I'll get the next caller ready if you guys want to make any statements or comments.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll just say that, um, we did bring the regular grading practices back for the fall. We had pass/fail in the fourth quarter last year, but with that said, we are, um, being more flexible given the pandemic and, you know, teachers are reaching out multiple times to families to, and to students to make sure that they have what they need and that there aren't any extenuating circumstances. So I think we'll continue to do that and, and when there are particular issues, you know, we want to hear about them, we want you to let your teachers know or guidance counselors for secondary, um, because we do understand that greater flexibility and, and understanding is called for. Um, you know, we, we do need to bring that accountability back, um, after last year, but, but it is definitely with that caveat.
Okay, our next caller Geraldine is ready with her question. Go ahead, Geraldine.
Hi, um, my name is Geraldine Wilmot and I am a resident in this district. I also have subbed in the school, I'm a, I'm a certified teacher. Um, my question is, um, well, I don't know if it's really a question, it's comments, that, um, I, I think that it's, uh, an excellent idea to close the schools between now and the mid, middle of January. We'll all be safer, there's a vaccine on the horizon, um, let's not jump ahead of what our safety is. Um, thank you very much. I hope that you all vote to go remote during the holidays. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just quick comment. A few, a few calls ago, somebody made the comment that when you're winning a war, you don't back off. If this is winning a war, I, I don't want to know what losing is. Going, the numbers that you heard from our county health commissioner, uh, going up is not, we're not winning any war here. I, I just, that analogy doesn't make sense.
Do we have the next caller?
Our next caller is here, and this is Holly. Go ahead, Holly.
Hi, um, my concern is, uh, I have two children. I have one who's in second grade at Ralph R. and then I have a son who's at the, the UPK program at Hyde Park Elementary. My son, he's more of a, I, I would really appreciate if the, I understand the pause, but I'd appreciate if the district kept it open, um, through the holiday. Um, but my son, he, he doesn't really grasp much from the Zoom meet for the pre, the pre-k program because it's only a 30 to 45-minute, um, meeting. So he, he doesn't really get much, he, he gets a lot through the, the class. Um, my daughter, she, we had the conference meeting last night with her teacher and she, she does so much better in the classroom, she applies herself there. At home, she's not really much of a, a computer person, she'd rather be, you know, outside doing physical things or, um, watching television or coloring or doing art. So I guess my, my, my thing is, could we please, uh, try to keep things open? I understand, like, everybody's working diligently and every, and hard for, um, keeping people safe. Uh, she, I guess I'm just leaning more towards keeping everything open. And I, I appreciate the district, you know, with everything that they're doing and kudos to you. Uh, with that being said, I guess everything's in your hands. Thanks, bye.
Thank you.
Next caller.
Yep.
Okay, this is Matt, and Matt, go ahead, the forum's waiting.
Hi, how are you? I think you guys are doing a great job, really, I really appreciate you guys having a forum like this for the community to voice their concerns during this really challenging time. Um, my biggest, hello, is anybody there? Don't hear anybody.
Yes, we're here. We can hear you.
Okay. Oh, great. So, um, one of the things I, in the action plan that you guys developed over the summer, you referenced a robust testing program. And that was really something that, um, my wife and I felt, uh, was pretty key in alleviating our concerns about the kids going back. And I haven't seen any of the districts around here really apply any type of testing to their, um, student body. Uh, right now, we're hearing about positive, uh, positive cases, but those positives, I suspect, are being, um, tested outside of the school district, uh, through third-party providers. So I was wondering, is there any type of plan or was there any type of discussion about possibly doing, uh, you know, pool testing for schools? So, you know, there, there's a testing programs out there where you can test an entire, you know, community or population and put that, all those, that, all those samples together and look for the DNA of the virus and then you would know if a popular, if, if there was a positive in the population, you'd be able to find that? Was there any discussions about that or? I mean, I, I really think I would feel more comfortable moving forward with in-person learning if there was some type of testing, because otherwise, as a parent, it feels like I'm just kind of waiting for the phone call, you know?
Thank you. Um, and we did write that plan at that time with, you know, everything that was before us in, uh, making that assumption that that testing would be available and that, you know, the staffing and, and all the other pieces that, um, the commissioner talked about, um, before he had to go, would be in place. Um, and at this time, what we're looking at, um, is that we're not required to do testing yet, um, or we're not, you know, a yellow or an orange zone, but that, um, we really don't have the ability, the county doesn't have the ability to do it for us, they don't have the staff available, um, and we don't have registered nurses available, um, to hire to do that work or other certified staff. So, um, that is one. nurses available to hire to do that work, or other certified staff. So that is one part of the reopening plan that I wish I could say, because I think we'd not only be not causing more problems in the pandemic, we'd be helping if we're able to do testing. And so, but unfortunately, the capacity just isn't there regionally for the staff. So, you know, that is something to consider. And again, many people have said it, we've not had a case that we're aware of that has been contracted in school. We've had positive cases that we hear about that then forced us to quarantine many students and staff. And that's, that's so far of what we know. But again, because those testing protocols are not available in the community as broadly, we really don't know how many asymptomatic people are out there. I think we've all heard that, but I, I need to say that.
And I'd also like to just jump in and say that, you know, the issue with testing itself is that, you know, right now, we're in a period of rising cases, and, you know, the laboratory capacity in the state is actually starting to get stressed along with the hospitals. So, you know, you're seeing a lot of, you know, testing being returned, you know, during longer periods of time. With COVID, in order to really be able to maybe contain an outbreak, you really need that information within, you know, 24, 48 hours. At this point, you know, we have some laboratories returning results, you know, sometimes seven days later. So that really doesn't help us contain anything that occurs. Right now, you know, you know, the county doesn't have any capacity, you know, for testing. The districts, I understand, you know, also is in the same boat. You know, the, what Dr. Kafka is saying is that, you know, if, if the district is required to test, it would be required to test if it was zoned the yellow. You know, right now, we're not there, but if that was the case for Hyde Park School District, you're talking approximately 720 students every two weeks, you know, if they had to test. And that is very dependent on the state, on, you know, what that number is, you know, for, for your pool. You know, so it's, it's, testing isn't just taking the sample and just sending it. There's an awful lot that goes into it.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And also, I don't have my doctorate. I'm master's plus. Thank you for that.
I'm promoting you.
Next caller.
Okay, this is Michael. Go ahead, Michael.
Uh, my name is Mike Wager. My daughter goes to Ralph Or Smith. She's been doing remote learning since school started. The teachers said she's doing very well with the remote learning. And I'm, I'm thinking that it wouldn't be a bad idea to take a pause. Yes.
But you're, the sound you hear on the computer is going to be different than the live. They're actually listening to you right now. So go ahead.
Um, so I think it's a good idea to take a pause, because the holiday's coming up, and go, go to remote learning.
Okay, that was Michael. We'll get the next caller on for you. If anybody wants to comment, go ahead.
Thank you.
All right, Charlene, you're on with the forum. Go ahead.
Hello.
They're hearing you. They're just not responding yet. Go ahead.
As a parent with a child in the school district, he's in first grade, I basically am just calling in to let you know what we as parents are going through. It has been horrible trying to do remote online learning with a little child. My son loves school, absolutely loves school. But having to sit in front of a computer all day and try to learn is not working. And I have complete respect for what you guys have probably had to go through to try to follow guidelines, and keep everybody safe, and still try to get these kids in school. And, and you know what? I don't know how you did it, and at least you got them back two days a week, and for that, we are very grateful as parents. But I have to say, I'm hearing all of this talk about us going fully remote, and as a parent, I'm freaking out. My kid is freaking out, because this is just not okay. And it's, I think it's very easy for people in the community to pass judgment, oh, the school should close down, and this and that. But as a parent, that is the worst thing I could hear. Do I want my child safe? Of course. That is my first priority, is that these children and these teachers are all safe. However, his education is also a huge concern of mine, because my little boy loves to learn. He goes to school, and he's so excited. But the minute you put him home in front of a computer, his love of learning goes out the window. He, he can't focus. He doesn't want to sit there. He doesn't want to do it. And to me, as a parent, that is heartbreaking. But these two days that he's been in school, oh my God, he's been a different kid. He's been fantastic. The only problem is, he's crying for more. I mean, I literally have a child melting down in tears, says he wants to go to school that bad. And as a parent, that is horrible. And trying to, to help him online, it consumes my whole day. I can't get anything else done. And all these parents that work full-time, I don't know how they're doing it, because there's not enough hours in the day to help our children and try to support our families. It's impossible. And, and I realize that that is nobody's fault. We're dealing with a situation that is completely sort of out of our control here, because it's not something we ever expected, and it's not something that we really know how to deal with. And everybody is just doing the best that they can. But I am begging, if it's at all possible, to keep these children in school. They need to be there. I have spoken with so many parents who feel exactly the same. I am dealing with it, and it's horrible. I mean, I, I used to limit my child's screen time, and now I'm forcing him to go in front of the computer all day. And it's awful. And his teachers are amazing. These teachers are doing such an amazing job. You know, I, I give them so much credit. I don't know how they're doing it. But in the same token, it's, it's just, it's not enough. It's become extremely difficult. I mean, it was bad enough doing it for three months in the spring. I had a kindergartner who didn't get to complete his kindergarten year the right way, who suddenly got thrown on a computer, couldn't see his friends anymore, couldn't see his teacher, and couldn't wrap his head around why. So as you can imagine, that was horrible. And I had to put him on a computer all day and try to get him to do work, which he did. He was a trooper. Every single day, that kid logged on and did what he had to do. Was he happy about it? No. Did I deal with a lot of meltdowns? Yes. But he did it. He was one of only six kids in his class out of 18 that logged on. The rest of them didn't do anything, because they couldn't, or whatever the reason would be. But the point is, only six kids were able to get on to do this. And I'm sure now, there's a lot of them that aren't able to get on either. So there's never a day that I've seen my son's full class on the computer, ever. And to me, that's horrible. These kids are, are missing, they're missing their education. And while a lot of people might downplay that and think that it's no big deal, it's a big deal to me. My son worked hard and got declassified at the end of last year, and now he's put in a situation where there's no extra help. He's there two days a week. There's no nothing. And I have to pray that he's going to be okay with that. I mean, realistically, he's not okay with that. He needs four days a week. He's totally disheartened when he's home and not in school. And it's hard. And as parents watching this, it's been horrible. And I just think that people really need to understand where we're coming from. I have complete respect for the children, or the parents who have underlying illnesses who, who have to be fully remote. That is their choice and necessary for their families. That's their decision, and that's perfectly fine. But for those of us who want our children in school, I feel like we have no say. I feel like we have no say in any of it. Like, and even when we speak up, nobody's listening. So I'm sorry, I don't mean to fire at you guys. It's just, it's been a really emotional time. And then, you know, in September, when we didn't start up as normal, as a parent having to hear that, my heart literally broke. I felt like I was going to lose my mind, being at home doing this again, with a child who wants to be in school so bad. So I just think that people need to hear that, because there's a lot of people feeling the exact same way. Like, I want my kid in school. He needs to be in school. He's got a mask on, which he hates, but he wears it every day so he can go to school. He's got a partition in front of his desk and on the sides of his desk. He's six feet apart from his classmates. Like, I really feel like he's triple-protected at this point. And I mean, you know, if that's the way it has to be to keep these kids safe, so that they can be in school and continue to be in school, then, then let's do that or something, because these kids need their education. They need to be there. They're lost being home all day long. It's just not natural. So as a parent who's been through this and is, is just continuing to, to feel this, I beg you, please, if there's anything that can be done, please keep these kids in school.
Okay, let me give the committee, the panel, a chance to respond to you. And certainly, you can call back if there's time at the end, but we have some other callers to get to, so I'm going to.
No, that's fine. I said my piece.
Yep, and I'll respond to you most likely once we hang up. So thank you very much for your call.
Thank you.
Might I, might I say something? I'll be short. That was a very emotional, and certainly tears at my heartstrings to hear this parent talk about the trials and tribulations that her children are going through. And, and I, and it really, as, as a parent myself, many of us are parents of school-aged kids, so we are going through it with you. But I also have gone through talking to kids who no longer have a parent to come home to. And that's been at the moment of time. And what we don't want is something mistakenly to happen because we had too much that exceeded our capacity, and those kids bring something home to the family, and that parent is no longer around. That's our concern, and that's the only concern that's driving our thinking about a pause. And I'll stop there.
Thank you. Next caller.
All right, this is Alyssa. She has a comment to make. Go ahead, Alyssa.
Hi, I want to speak as a mother of two that go to the district, and also as a Hyde Park employee. As a mother, obviously, social aspects of being in school are great, but we're not shutting down forever. We're talking about shutting down for eight weeks. As an employee, I work hands-on with the kids, not behind plexiglass, not six feet apart from them, and with children that have special needs and don't always keep their masks up. And the people that watch my children at home are 75 and 55, both with health issues. I have a five-year-old daughter that was diagnosed with liver damage last year, and a daughter with asthma. And an employee that I work with that passed away from COVID. It's a serious, serious thing, and I understand everyone's, you know, concerns about, you know, the learning aspect, and how they're doing online, and how that's affecting them as far as next year. But eight weeks out of our life could be the difference of my grandmother's life. It could be the difference of, you know, slowing this virus down. And if that's what it takes, eight weeks to get us back on track and that much closer to getting our kids on a healthier and more normal track, eight weeks out of our life, I think, is nothing. You know, it's, I'd like to see my grandmother live, and, you know, my children be able to thrive and not have to worry every day that this virus could, you know, affect them and could possibly kill them. So eight weeks is a giant difference to people whose families have health issues, whose coworkers have been affected by this, because they're not behind the plexiglass. They're not six feet away. And it's a serious deal. And I just, I want my kids to be back to normal as much as everyone else does. I want my kids to have the social interaction like every other parent does. But the reality of it is, the numbers are going up. It's not going away. We need to protect our families. We need to protect, you know, everyone in our community. And Hyde Park works outside of Hyde Park District, being St. Martin, who had two positive cases in their kindergarten class, and also a child that came in to me as of today and said that her class had a, a kid who test results didn't come back in yet, but they were still sending the children into school. So now I am less than six feet away, and only a mask between us, and she could have been in contact and carrying the virus herself. Now, I came home today to my 75-year-old grandmother and my two children who have conditions, and I could be transmitting this to them. So I am fully in support, as a parent, as an employee of the district, to shut down for eight weeks for the health of everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I'm sure that the group will comment. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks. I want to thank you for your comments as well. I just a time check. We're just under half hour left, so we're going to move on to the next caller.
All right, go ahead, Shallen.
Okay. Hi, this is Shallen Morris. I have two students that are in the Netherwood Schools, and I have just a couple of things that I wanted to express concern over. The first is, if parents have a concern that they don't want their kids to go to school, they have every option to keep them home. But there are a lot of parents who want their children to go to school. In fact, per the New York State COVID summary report card, there's 33% of students that are currently going to school. So if there are parents that want to keep them home, let those parents keep their children home. But me, as a parent who is an essential worker, who has a husband who is an essential worker, we need our kids to be in school. We are working, I am currently working from home, trying to finagle with my second grader and my fifth grader on what is needed and what is necessary to be productive members of society, what it means to take all of this into consideration and doing the best that we can. But those two days a week are so important for these children to be in school. There are no teachers who have contracted COVID. There are teachers that are calling in tonight saying, we're concerned about our safety. Again, they're an essential worker, and they may not have considered themselves an essential worker before, but they are now. So they need to step to the task. My tax dollars are paying their salaries. They need to go to work. They need to teach our kids. Yes, we want to do this in a safe capacity, and we have been doing that. The one question I did have was, there have been 19 positive contacts out of, or cases, and a contact tracing of 496. How many of those contacts turned into a positive case? Are they random students that are contracting COVID from outside sources, and then everybody is being quarantined? Do we have the information to say these 19 cases have turned into an exponential amount of positive cases in the community?
Hi, I can answer that for Hyde Park. I'm not aware of any of the contacts turning up positive, of the contacts that we I'm not aware of any of the contacts turning up positive of the contacts that we've made. Um, but perhaps Mario has some, some information, um, from other schools.
Um, well, I mean, um, for the most part, you know, uh, I haven't heard of any of the contacts also, you know, turning into cases. Um, you know, so, uh, but you, you still have to, you know, be careful because you don't really, uh, know at which stage, you know, that they might, uh, turn. Usually, you know, two to five days after the contact, you know, you're, you're, you're concerned and, um, you know, we still have the contact, you know, quarantined for four, for 14 days. Um, you know, with that being said, um, you know, public health does what it's, what it's supposed to do and try to, you know, address an outbreak and try to contain, um, the, uh, the outbreak to the, the limited cases. It seems to be working, um, you know, uh, but I don't have any, you know, uh, information uh, saying that, uh, uh, the contacts are turning into cases. Uh, as far as I know, they, uh, the contacts are also all negative.
Mario, just a question, Mario. So, in order for this to be, to have a legitimate discussion about testing, in order to know what the prevalence in the schools are, you really would have to test all the students. Because you, 19 cases that you found doesn't mean that there aren't 10, 20, 30, 50 more cases in Dutchess County students that are asymptomatic and walking into classrooms and that are tied, something is driving cases to go up exponentially in this region. And I'm not suggesting that the transmission only happens in the school, but, but it's also unrealistic to say, "We know that it's not the school if we're not testing the kids." Because you don't know that 25 of the kids aren't going home and that the cases you're find, that we're finding that are going up exponentially aren't tied somehow to that either. I'm not, I'm not saying they are, they aren't. We just don't have that kind of valid information without, without having legitimate testing. And, and I'm, this is not blaming the district or the county. This is just a fact, okay? Until we can test everybody, we, the, everything we're talking about, that nine, by the way, that policy of nine that you started at the beginning of the year, 9%, we don't know what, what we, what the real percentages are because we're not testing everybody. A lot of the people that, Mario, correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of the people getting tested right now are getting tested because they're traveling. They're, they're flying places, they're driving places. They're healthy people who really don't really think they have COVID, but want to have a negative test so for Thanksgiving, for Halloween, for Christmas, that they can go to visit their families and feel good about it. I can tell you that I tested my practice and we had, the vast majority of the people requesting tests today were not people who were sick or concerned, but were traveling.
Yeah, no, you're, you're absolutely correct. And well, and, and, you know, like, uh, I'll, I'll give you an example. In, in the nursing home population, uh, for example, which, you know, I, I lead a, um, a, a task force on, um, you know, when we did testing, we did whole populations. And, and you're absolutely right, there are, you know, there's, there's a certain percentage, uh, in the community that, uh, is asymptomatic. That's absolutely correct. Um, you know, will we fully know, you know, what that number is? Uh, um, I don't know. Uh, you know, and, and pool testing is supposed to help with that. Uh, but, you know, the reality is, is that, uh, um, unless you have, you know, the, the full, uh, number N, uh, you, you know, you're not going to necessarily have, uh, the, the right percentage, uh, of folks. Or, you know, whether or not, um, you know, where they might be, uh, picking that up, you know, uh, in, in the school setting, teachers could be bringing it in, you know, they're members of the community. Uh, the kids doing the same. Um, you know, anybody who's in the community is at risk, um, you know, for contracting. Uh, there, there's no one, uh, particularly safe, um, so to speak. Um, but, you know, uh, the one thing that we're, we're looking at here is, is the, um, our ability to test, our, our, our state capacity to test. Um, and don't forget, you know, we also have, you know, other diseases out there. You know, this isn't the only one that, uh, our labs are, are concerned with. So, um, yeah, absolutely.
And I understand all of that and I know that my time is running short. The only other question I have is, again, myself and my husband are both essential workers. If we do travel or go outside the area or have family come in, we are mandated to test on the date in which we come back or the date in which we have family leave. We are then mandated again to have a test four days after that fact. Is that statement put in place for the teachers who are then teaching our children? So, what is the policy as far as the teachers being tested if they are choosing to leave or go beyond what is required by New York State?
Thank you. Um, the same guidance that you're speaking to has been shared with all staff. So, that is the expectation for all staff. If they travel, um, it's, it's the requirement, um, from the state. So, we are following that for all staff and we have shared that with families as well.
Okay, again, I know my time is up, so I definitely appreciate it. Thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time as well.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Hi, this is David. He's a return caller, so go ahead, David.
Returners all, thanks again, guys, for having me. I, I just wanted to address, again, uh, there, there, there's a misunderstanding here. Um, Dr. Tac, um, had brought up that I had said that we were winning a battle and he said, "If this is winning, we don't know what losing is." Um, again, sir, I believe you're talking about coronavirus as a whole. I, I'm not talking about COVID-19 in the county. Again, the school's not responsible for, um, the COVID rates in the county. Um, its protocols, again, are to make sure that children who aren't fortunate enough to get it, unfortunate enough to get it, don't spread it to the other students. And from what I understand, the stats I'm seeing, that's not happening. Like, it's not being transferred from student to student under the protocol. If there's any kind of data that shows otherwise, I'm glad to hear it. I'm not saying that coronavirus isn't a problem. I'm saying it's not being contracted in our schools. And that's what I'm worried about. I'm worried about Hyde Park Central School District.
So, I appreciate-
If I'm wrong, correct me.
So, so, yeah, I would like to respond. I, I appreciate that very much. I want to understand that I'm a parent, I have children and, and I, I, I feel the, the, the suffering of the parents here that are home with the kids. I don't want you to think for one moment that we don't. The, the, the point that you're making would be valid if we were testing all the kids. If we were able to go into the school where one child was positive and we tested all the other children around in the, in the building, then we would know whether or not transmission was occurring in the school or not. Since we know that many kids are asymptomatic, there is much more so than senior citizens and peoples in their 30s, 40s and 50s, we really don't know. There's, there's a lot of assumption being made. But what we, what we do know, what we do know for facts are the number of people admitted to the hospitals, the number of people in the intensive care units and the number of cases in the county are quickly going up exponentially. We know what's happening in other parts of the country. We've lived through this before. Understand, I'm trying, I want to put myself out of business. I don't want 50 consults in an intensive care unit to go see COVID patients. I would rather not have to do that. I don't want to be on the phone with husbands and wives and parents explaining to them that we're going to say goodbye over telephone. That's my goal here. My goal is not to hurt your children. My goal is not to hurt this school district. I'm here to help provide some guidance. It, your point is fair if we were testing all the people. It's not my fault, it's not your fault, it's not Aviva's fault, it's not the school board's fault, it's not the county health department's fault. We don't have the testing capacity to do that. So, we're looking, we're looking, all we have is real numbers, real numbers going up exponentially, real admission. Now, when you talk about the hospitals, David, I would tell you, if you want to come meet me tomorrow at the entrance of Vassar, you can make rounds with me and you'll get, kind of get a different sense. The numbers are, we're not talking about one to three here. We're talking about when we had, we have four patients in Vassar. Now, we're, now, we're opening up floors and closing down floors for COVID patients, okay? The, the staff, again, is getting overwhelmed and we're having transmission in the buildings now. It's, it's so overwhelming that we're heading very much in the wrong direction. Now, we can wait, we can go through Thanksgiving, we can go 14 more days and, and get to the middle of December and we could be sitting here saying, "Now, we're stopping essential, non-essential operations. We're stopping knee replacements and hip replacements and colonoscopies and everything and, and going back to the hospital as COVID-only." That's a very, very dangerous place, okay? So, I understand, I understand your point, I do. I'm not here to be an objectionist or, I'm here to try to, I wa, as I said, I want to put myself out of business here, okay? I don't need more COVID patients. I'm trying to protect you, uh, you know, I, and when Mario talked about working with nursing homes, I'm working with something called Project Echo with Westchester Medical Center. We're working with 130 nursing homes as, on trying to get them to be the safest place we can for our grandparents, our relatives, your families. Because we really want to, three months from now, those people are going to be vaccinated, okay? Four months from now. Four mon, I, I have faith in our children. They're resilient, they're going to get back to school and they're going to succeed and have great lives. But we can't reverse the damage that we do in the next three months until we get there. So, when you were talking about winning a war, right now, we win the war by keeping everybody alive, keeping the hospitals functioning at capacity, getting through this, getting to a vaccine and getting back to life. That's winning the war, okay?
And I, I completely get that and I agree with you 100% on that. There, there's not one part of me that disagrees with that and maybe it's just a battle instead of war. I, I, I guess what, what my point of all that is, and I, and I do agree that the numbers are going up, um, but I do find that in, not necessarily just this panel, but I hear it all over, that, you know, it's, it's, it's all attributed to Halloween and we're worried about Thanksgiving. And sure, kids will not trick-or-treating, but also I think a lot of people forget that, you know, a week, week and a half, two weeks before the election, there were rallies and protests and like, all over the place. And whenever one group would show up, another group would show up to stand across the street and yell at them.
You're, you're-
Then when the election happened, we had more riots, we had more protests. So, I mean, I, I understand that, you know, we're saying Halloween was an issue, but I don't think it's the only issue. But I, I believe with my whole heart, really, and even with my kids involved, it's not just about, you know, keeping them in school and, you know, hardship on us, sure. But I really believe that with the protocols the schools have put in place, I believe they're restrictive and most adher-to protocols anywhere in the county. And that is because chi, children are generally, they, they trust teachers like they trust their parents. And if a teacher says, "I need you to sit here and don't touch anybody and do that," the children listen, just like they do at home. So, I do believe wholeheartedly that the schools themselves are actually the safest place for a child to be. And I think that, you know, i- if, if one child, you know, contracted, and again, if I'm wrong, I heard of, uh, one child in North Park, one child in Rock Park Smith, one child in Havlin, but it never went beyond that as far as the student body went. And I think that's what it was trying to do to begin with and that's what I think is successful. So, besides the fact that I want my kids to get, you know, the learning going on and the, um, in-person learning, um, like I said, it's just, it's my belief and I believe it's a lot of the, the families' beliefs that really, the, the school really is the, the safest place. And I mean, I've, I'm, you know, my job, I've, you know, been working through all of this. I never took a day off. I've been working 40-hour weeks, I've been in all different kinds of places. And I see people that, you know, I go into offices and buildings where people don't wear masks or, or don't, or have that attitude of, "Oh, you're my friend, I can't catch nothing from you, so let's, give me a hug." And I, I think that schools are the only places where that's not happening. And that, so that, I think it's just my opinion that I just believe that schools are the safest.
Thank you, David, and, and Mark Tac, thank you so much. Um, I, I didn't, I was worried about that misunderstanding and I'm glad it got cleared up. Um, while we're quarantining people, they're not unnecessarily getting tested. So, I just wanted to say that, I thought of that initially. But I really want, um, the last 10 minutes for families, um, so we're going to take our next caller.
Okay.
Thank you for your time, all of you, thank you.
Hey.
All right, so this is Eileen. Go ahead, Eileen, if you've got a comment or a question for the group.
I do. Um, can you hear me? I put my speaker down to zero.
Yes, they can, go ahead.
Okay, all right. I'm a little confused. Uh, the email I got said that this forum was supposed to be about whether we were in-person hybrid versus full remote learning from November 30th through January, I guess it says 15th. I haven't heard one iota about that yet. I'm a 72-year-old grandmother that I work with my grandson remote. That's all I need to know. I do it three days a week. Am I now doing it fine? Uh, you know, I understand all the logistics, but you need to tell me what my job is. Is it going to be every day that I'm going to be working with this child on the computer? And then maybe once it gets to be January 15th, you'll let us know if you're going to continue that? That's my question.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, hold on. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd love to answer that, Aviva, if I could. Um, this forum is about just getting community input and gathering information right now. We have a board meeting scheduled immediately after this forum for the board and the administration to discuss things and to, and to make a decision. So, that's why you haven't heard a decision yet, there just hasn't been one made. Um, and that's what we're here for. We're here to talk about it. So, please stay tuned and, you know, once, once the forum is over, we're going to have a board meeting and hopefully, you know, we'll come to some decision at that point. But thank you so much.
Thank you. Denise, perfectly said. And also, for anyone not listening, um, I will send a school messenger to everyone via email after that meeting, um, just so everyone will know, um, whether they're home five days a week or, or two days a week with their children.
Jennifer is here with her next question.
After the next one, just a quick comment, okay?
Okay, go ahead, Jennifer.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, perfect. So, um, I wanted to call in, um, from the unique, but maybe not so unique perspective as being a parent and a teacher in the district. And, um, I love both of my hats with all my heart. Um, I just wanted to say, you know, for the parents that are stressed about and the families that are stressed about kids going home and being remote only, um, you know, I, I don't want that either for my own kids. And believe me, as a teacher, the amount of work that comes from us creating all the remote learning for those kids, you're talking about teacher fatigue, family fatigue and most importantly, child learning fatigue. They don't do well on the computer. However, I do want our families and our colleagues and our children to be safe. So, I think if we rethink of it more as instead of a pause or a closure, as almost like a post-holiday quarantine. Because I was in a class that was quarantined this year. And because we were quarantined, nobody else did contract and become positive. And without that quarantine, I do feel like there would have been an increase in cases. Um, so, you know, I want to do what's safe. I, you know, thank everybody for all their effort in making this hard decision. Um, but, you know, we really need to consider it as like a quarantine from the holidays. On the other side, I implore, I implore the Board of Ed to look at our remote learning model. It cannot be the expectation that we're going to recreate the school day in an online forum. It's just not going to happen. It's not fair to the grandmas, the babysitters, the moms, the dads, the people who are having to implement this in their homes with their own work and life schedule. So, I would just really implore the Board of Ed to consider, maybe more is not always more when we're looking at remote learning and to really prioritize what our kids need to do when they're home. And, you know, thank you for hearing my view.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Nope, take care, everyone.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to go right to the next call because we only have five minutes left and then people can still listen to the board meeting. So, I, I don't want to have us responding anymore so we can get a couple more in.
Okay, this is Mary. Mary, go ahead, you're on with the forum, they can hear you.
Hi, good evening, how are you? First, I'd like to say thank you for being here, but I don't-
First, I'd like to say thank you for being here, but I don't agree with closing the schools. You have a whole bunch of kids that are not online learners. They are struggling severely. I've had four people just this week alone call me for my tutor's number that I use for my son. The teachers, I know they're scared. I get it. I work in healthcare. I've been on the front line since the beginning of March. I understand they're scared. However, they are now considered essential workers. These kids need to be in school. There is not the structure from parents at home, from any of us, to be teachers and to have these kids learning online all day. You are not doing them a service by putting them online. I understand everybody wants to be safe, but the CDC has already stated many times this week, the safest place for these kids are in the school. You know, I get it. Teachers are scared. If they're that scared, then you know what? Maybe they should stay home, let somebody else take over. Some of these teachers, I give them the greatest applause. Some of your teachers should be ashamed. I know for a fact from some of my patients that have told me that your teachers are calling out, they're recruiting other teachers to call out, and then they're going around calling subs to not get them to not come in. You're not doing our kids a service. You are not doing them justice. They need to be in school.
Okay, Mary. We're gonna go on to the next caller. The panel wants to get as many calls as they can very quickly. So thank you for your call.
Well, great response. Thanks.
Yeah, while that's coming on, we will respond. So please stay on the line. We're just gonna let the last caller come in.
Okay, Carrie, you're on with the board. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Carrie Palermo. Couple of quick thoughts.
That was Rick calling in. That line got dropped, so I assume he will call right back in.
Sorry, my mic. I was gonna... I'm gonna answer the last caller now that we have a minute. You know, I know our teachers are working really hard. I don't think we're seeing a lot of people calling in sick. There's a sub shortage across the region that has been really challenging. I may have said it earlier, we've had times when we have to close our quarantine of staff. It's only one day in some cases and staff have been filling in. So just wanna say that and then we'll take a call.
Okay, we just got back. Sorry about that. We dropped unexpectedly. Carrie, you're online. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. This is Carrie Palermo. I just wanted to come on with my two cents about, you know, each kind of side to this. My kids need their two days. I am so thankful. I can't be any more thankful. They have amazing teachers at Ralph R. Smith, at FDR. I have three kids go in the school district and you guys have done such a phenomenal job keeping them safe. I know there's been five or six cases. You shut down the school, you cleaned it and you got them all back in and I can't be more thankful for that. And I really hope that's the direction that we are able to keep going in, you know, kind of take the isolation, isolate the incident, clean it up and get them back in. I know there's a number of teachers that also miss, love, really want to be in the school and love to be with the kids. I know there's other parents. I hope we're thinking about the kids who, you know, I may have the luxury of being able to pop home every now and then to check in and double check with my kids, but I know that we all know that there's the families who don't have that luxury. It's a tough time. I know this is a really, really hard decision. I just hope that we can try to find a way to keep them with those two days, if at all possible, for their, for the social component, for the educational component. I think a bunch of us have always been, oh my gosh, I don't want my kids on the electronics and now we have to have them on, which is a sign of the times. It's not a big deal. It is what it is and three days a week we can do. But I'm really hoping that as you guys sit down tonight at this meeting, which I'm also thankful for because I know you're taking your time and that's a lot of work on you guys. But I hope that you look at the whole picture and how you really have been so successful with keeping our kids safe and, you know, quarantining it, shutting it down and moving on. And everybody has a different opinion. And I really hope as a community, that whatever the end result is here, that we can be supportive and move forward and get to whatever the next step is and that we're all working towards the same goal of keeping our kids safe and keeping them educated, but that we do it with kindness and we really look at the whole picture. So I just want to thank you for what you've been doing and your consideration for keeping them in school for two days. But I will support your decision, whatever you end up coming up with after this.
Thank you so much, Carrie. They're gonna respond to you after you get offline. Thank you so much.
Awesome. So I hang up now, yes?
Yep, thank you.
Carrie, thank you so much. That will be our final call-in for the forum. I want to thank you, Carrie, and answer just that this community has been, almost without exception, exactly what you say, kind, understanding, thankful, and also sharing their opinion honestly with us. So for that, I am really grateful at this time of year to express gratitude, really grateful to this community. And so that for people who didn't get to call in within the two hours, you know that you can call us, you can call my office, you can email me. Our Thanksgiving break does start tomorrow through the weekend. And with that, I am gonna close this forum and then we actually have the board meeting. So people I know can still listen in on the live feed. Rick, can you tell people, do they just stay on the same feed or do they have to go to a different link?
We're gonna keep everybody right here in this, in this link. So this, whenever you say the magic words, this becomes the Board of Education meeting. We wanted to keep it simple for everybody.
So, thank you. I'm gonna bow out and let the board take it from here, but I am still here, of course.
Well, thank you, guys. I'm gonna bow out myself. Hope we've been helpful and if you have any questions, Aviva, you always know where to get me.
Yes. I'm sorry, Mario Gonzalez, Dr. Tack, Dr. Ritter. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for being here tonight, to giving up your evening and many other days and evenings and phone calls and you've really been there for us and I appreciate it more than to express.
Do any of the board members have any questions for us?
I don't have any questions for you at this time. Do any of the other board members, do they, do we want to invite them to stay for the board meeting?
I have one question.
Can we, before we answer questions, can we open the board meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna welcome everybody to a board meeting for the Hyde Park Central School District. It's Tuesday, November 24th. May I have...I'm all out of order. Sorry, I'm all out of, with everything. Can I, do I have to have a motion to call the meeting to order, Jeff?
No.
Okay. I call this meeting to order, I guess. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God and divisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Well, first of all, do we have any agenda modifications? I don't think so. Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as is?
So, Jeff?
Second, Carl.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes? Okay, now we can go on with our discussion. Thank you. So Jeff, you had a question?
Yeah, my question is, what is the difference? Does it have to be the two weeks or a one-week pause be effective? A lot of districts are going for a one-week pause, not three weeks. And that's my question right there.
I'll give you my best answer. Jeff, there is no, there is no perfect right or wrong answer here. I think that it's a decision that the board has to make. I think that as time goes forward, you're going to have more and more information as to which direction the rates in the county, the rates in the region are going to go. So there are advantages and disadvantages to either one. You could take a pause from the end of Thanksgiving break for a week or you could go to Christmas. You could go further. The advantage of going further, you know, of saying to Christmas, or at least I would say 14 days from Thanksgiving, is the, that's the lag period we're gonna experience. Now, I understood that David was talking about the rallies and that, and I don't want to get political about that at all. It's just that the timing was two weeks after Thanksgiving, Halloween. Thanksgiving, we know is coming. We know a lot of people are going to be mixing and we know there's just going to be increasing cases. We're working very hard with nursing homes to try to protect them in this time. A lot of families want to bring their loved ones home. You could go a week. You could go, I would suggest if you were gonna do a pause, that you do it for 14 days after the Thanksgiving holiday because that's what's going to tell us the direction. If the direction is going down, believe me, no one would be happier to say, hey, everybody stepped up, things are going well. Go back, open up the classrooms, go five days a week. You have that option. You could reassess it at any time. That's, that's the decision you get to make. I wouldn't suggest going shorter than 14 days. At that point, you're not gonna really have a lot of information. There's gonna be a lag period between what happens and the transmission those first couple of days, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. You know, I don't even want to think about, my wife was talking to me about, what does Black Friday look like? Are we gonna see lines outside of Walmarts and Targets? Doors? I don't know what that even looks like anymore. But that effect is going to be felt in the medical community and the, and the community at large in about two weeks. If you want to regroup around the middle of December and say, hey, where are we? How is the county doing? How are the numbers? Should we reopen? Full, remote, hybrid, whatever you choose. Dr. Ritter, myself, we're here to help you, guide you. Give us your, our best advice. It's your decision. So we're just here to help. I mean, I'm not here to tell you what to do. The recommendations I'm making are based upon 25 years of practicing infectious diseases and living through, to put now, my second pandemic.
Yeah.
And I could tell you also, you know, I stuck around just in case you guys had any questions, you know, from, from, you know, the summer, I mean, you could tell after every holiday weekend, there's always a little bit of a bump. And that's, you know, to be expected, you know, depending on what the holiday is and, you know, what the weather was like and, you know, there's always, there's always something to consider. You know, 14 days typically, you know, if there is an effect, you know, we'll probably help you figure out better, you know, what, what effect, what that effect actually is gonna be. In the nursing homes, you know, we test, you know, the employees every week and we, you know, whenever we see a positive employee, we test the entire facility every three to seven days. And even then, you know, we still, you know, get surprises, you know, it hasn't been, you know, I think when I tested my whole, my first facility, you know, facility wide, you know, I got a bunch of patients that I never even thought would have, would have, would have been, you know, positive, you know, there is a asymptomatic percentage out there that, that can spread the virus. So, you know, we're, as a county, you know, we're not gonna tell you, you know, you have to close or you don't have to close or you have to stay open, not open. Just, these are the facts and these are, these are our experiences as we've, have worked this pandemic, you know, for a while. So, you know, but, but there is, you know, usually after a holiday, you know, there has been bumps, you know, in a number of cases. You know, we'll see what happens after Thanksgiving. Right. And Mario, Thanksgiving is different than the Fourth of July, Labor Day. Absolutely. It's an indoor holiday where people sit around the table and then go watch football games. They don't go out to parks and have barbecues. Correct. And so, and the point that you just made is something that I just want to reinforce. I think you guys have done a great job and I want to, again, commend you. But there's an assumption that's been made that you've only had a certain number of cases. And without testing the buildings, you don't know that. Correct. Mario just told you that he went to nursing homes because a patient was positive. He tested the whole facility and there were lots of positives that they were surprised about. There are gonna be more asymptomatic children than there are going to be asymptomatic nursing home residents. Nursing home residents typically don't do well with this disease. That's what we learned from this. So I'm not, I'm not trying to denigrate any of the hard work. I'm just saying that there's a sense of, you know, relief that we've gotten this far and that's great. But there's also an unrealistic understanding that you've only had this small number of cases without doing the testing. And it's not, again, it's not its fault. It's just a reality that we really don't know what the incidents in the school buildings are. And we do know that the incidents in the community is going up exponentially. That's, that is a reality. I don't follow the 3%, by the way, Denise, and the board. I don't follow the 3%, 5% because that's a variable of who gets tested, who wants to get tested, how many tests are done. I look at the hospital census. To me, how many people are sick? How many people need to be admitted? How many people need oxygen and how many people are in ventilators and how many people die? That's a marker of what's going on in the community.
If you don't, just a minute, because while we were going through our meeting, I scanned my hospital list because I'm on that service. And I'll tell you what Dr. Tack is saying, and again, you know, what we have in the hospital represents the smaller fraction of all the positives. People who are slightly ill, moderately ill or asymptomatic and not in the hospital, which is a much bigger number. But our numbers from the last three weeks have gone up 300% for inpatient population, all with COVID. And I'll tell you, I wanted to mention it because of the other gentleman. I looked at the age distribution and there is about one-third of them who are parental age and the other two-thirds are somebody's grandparent. And, you know, that's, they didn't get it from Walmart being in line. They probably got it from somebody who came to visit them, maybe a grandchild. So, and then also, I think the two weeks is a minimum because this present spike that will, that is, you know, we don't know if this present spike is on the downturn or still on the upswing. We think it's on the upswing and the Thanksgiving spike will only add to them. So I agree 100%. Two weeks would be what would be the bare minimum, frankly.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, but I don't know if we can compare Halloween to Thanksgiving. That's my, my thing. Halloween brought many different families together, not one cluster families. That's my only thought is we're trying to compare Halloween and I don't think we know.
Yeah, honestly, every holiday, every holiday is really different in the way we celebrate it. You know, Dr. Tack is right. Thanksgiving is a, is a, is a holiday of families where they travel, they get together, they stay indoors, they talk, they hug, they kiss, they miss and, and all that. Halloween, you know, was, was a, where kids were, for the most part, wearing masks and, and, you know, a lot of families had some really unique ways to give out candy. I saw one family build a PVC tube from the door to the, to the floor and then threw candy down the tube. But here, you know, what I'm trying to say is that the holiday, the fact that we are having a holiday is going to show us a bump. And that's traditionally what we've seen, you know, since February. So that's all we wanted to consider.
Thank you. I think we have to bring this back around. I think we have to bring this back around to our board members a little bit. Does anybody have any specific questions before we start just a general conversation? Um, Zade, I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'd, I'd love to hear a student's perspective. Um, we had, um, we had a letter, a couple of comments about, you know, the pros and cons of, of being in the high school and what that's, what that's like. We had some concerns about the cafeteria, you know, in one of our emails and about classes and the mixing in the halls, you know? Do you have any, do you have any, any thoughts on this?
Yep. So I can say for Tuesday, when we had to go remote, that we went back to our old remote schedule of having, like, say you have science class twice a week and you have English class twice a week. And I think that was good in the beginning because no one was really used to having. No one was used to learning a new class online. But I think that was like good in the beginning to get used to it. And once we went hybrid, you would have, you would be in class all day, whether that's in class or online. And some people who stayed remote, they had full online days on the computer. So I think we've built a routine with that. And I think going back to the old remote schedule that we did on Tuesday, will throw a lot of people off. And also now that we're past the first quarter, I think we learned the fundamentals of the class and we're starting to apply them more as we get deeper into the class. And I feel that being able to have like a class setting online twice a week is going to put a lot of people in a bad spot moving forward. So I think, maybe not for the middle school and elementary schools, that's different, but I'm saying for the high schools. I think it would be best for us if we were to go fully remote to just keep going with periods one through eight on Monday and Tuesday, Thursday and Friday. But I can definitely say that Wednesdays being asynchronous has definitely been good for mostly everyone because it serves as like a catch-up day that you can work on. Say you have like a lab due, sometimes the teachers will say, work on it through Wednesday. If you have any questions, come to office hours by then. So I think Wednesdays are working good. And I think that in terms of going fully remote, going to each class twice a week wouldn't be good moving forward. And I feel that from a student perspective, having that full class day, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Wednesday is often the best to learn.
I'm gonna chime in. I'm on, oh, and I actually, unless you have any further questions, I probably should go answer my calls.
Thank you very much for being here, Dr. Ritter. Appreciate all of your help.
And now I'll find out tomorrow. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Is there any, is there any reason? I mean, I'll stand if you'd like, but it sounds like you just have a, some decisions to make and.
Yeah, and we, we do.
Can I just, can I just ask a, a general question to the doctors before they leave? Um, I, I'm just curious, uh, back in March, when this thing first started, one of the big reasons why we did the pause in the shutdown and, and everything was because of capacity, right? We wanted to move the curve to the right, you know, not stop it, just move the curve to um, help ease the burden on the medical community, uh, capacity. Has anything been done since March in the medical community to increase capacity, knowing that Wave 2 would eventually come and hit us? Has anything been done?
Yes.
Absolutely.
An enormous amount of things have been done. Uh, well, there's, but let's back up. There's different, capacity means different things to different people. So back in March, there was a concern about capacity of, did we have enough ventilators for people? Would we have to ration care? And so there's plenty of ventilators. There's been buildup in capacity in that way. It hasn't been built up in bed capacity. We haven't, despite the big building you see going up, that's not open yet. There are no more beds now in the hospitals than there were. You know, they, they brought in the ship, you know, you know, the stories and, and the Javits Center, there's the ability. So there have been plans, surge capacity, plans put in place. But quite honestly, the capacity, uh, now is, is a little different because back then we shut hospitals down to everything elective. So it was emergency care and COVID. So people, you only went, got into a hospital if there were no elective anything. Okay? Everything, cataract surgeries, knee replacements, hip replacements, anything got put off. Those things are not shut down yet, but they're closed. The other difference is there was an ability to increase capacity in doctors and nurses back in March and April because we were able to draw from other parts of the country and get nurses and doctors to come help. Those nurses and doctors are now stuck in their own cities where across the country, as you know, all, all but three states are quote red and hot and increasing. And so they're experiencing their own shortages of nurses, doctors and respiratory therapists. And, and quite honestly, lastly, there's a fatigue. The doctors, the nurses, the staff, they're wiped out from this. They are, the, the idea that we're going to go back to 100, 150, 200 patients, six ICUs. You know, I mean, they closed down the Dyson Cancer Center and they turned it into an intensive care unit. They turned the recovery room and the operating room into a intensive care unit. The idea that, so the capacity is there, but the, the idea that we go back to that level, it is incredibly frustrating and tiring. Uh, you know, on a personal level, and I'm not asking anybody to cry for me, I worked 87 out of the first 90 days of COVID. I spent, there were three days I didn't go to the hospital. I can't, I can't do that again. I'm too old for this. And the reality is for a lot of the, there is a, a limit to the capacity of what the medical community can absorb right now. There, there is, there's, if you think you're fatigued and from wearing masks.
Yeah.
The medical community is even more fatigued because they're, they're, they're doing their, this is their life.
Yeah, I wanted to just add that because I was on the committee, um, concerned with rationing ventilators. We were down at one point to our last 10 ventilators. Um, and so we never got to the point where we had to ration. Um, it's a possibility that we would have to ration even more now because as Dr. Tac says, our other services are up and running right now. They're not all closed down. That's a problem. And on, on top of that, you know, I had one of my ICU nurses and, you know, um, they deserve kudos because they were in that COVID unit. I rounded in Dyson Center. I rounded in the recovery room. Um, uh, you know, they were in there 12 hours a day. And one of the ICU nurses turned to me this past week because we'd seen the numbers going up and said, you know, you think it's going to happen again? And I said, I'm worried that it is. And she says, I don't know if I can do it again. You got nurse break, you know?
Yeah, I mean, this time, you're, you're right. You know, in the beginning, uh, too, you have to think about where we were. This, this virus has been a learning curve for a lot of us, um, for a lot of reasons. Um, you know, it, you know, how it behaves, uh, who gets it, what percentages of, of, of people are asymptomatic versus symptomatic? What percentage, you know, in, in the beginning, you know, it was a brand new virus. You know, we were all expecting either very high mortality rates or, or, uh, we didn't know what to expect and we ramped up that way. Um, you know, a lot of the hospitals, you know, did an awful lot of training. Uh, it's not easy uh, for nurses or, or doctors to operate ventilators and, uh, they had to train a lot of people that weren't used to operating uh, ventilators, you know, to, uh, to do it. So you turn the entire facility into an ICU. Uh, the doctors are right. You know, now, you know, the capacity is, a lot of the services are, are running. Uh, just because, you know, you closed the, the cancer center to turn it into an ICU, doesn't mean cancer goes away. You know, those patients still have to also be seen. Um, and you know, we have the same issue in the health department, you know? Uh, STDs are still, you know, uh, uh, you know, uh, those rates are still, you know, coming in, you know? The STD rate is not zero, you know, uh, you know, things that we still have to, uh, still attend to. So a lot of it is, you know, uh, you know, mental tiredness, you know, we're, we're, we're all tired. We're all working. We're all working. Uh, you know, uh, long hours and, um, uh, you know, it's, it's just, uh, uh, it's tough on all of us. Um, you know, in, in the long run. So that's the type of capacity, you know, we're talking about. And now, you know, we've increased the capacity of testing and every time we increase the capacity of testing, it still blows that number out of the water and, and still continues. You know, I always say, you know, if I had many money, I would either, you know, you know, make a PPE factory or, uh, or open up a lab right now. Um, you know, but that's, that's just the way things are.
But Mario, one reality we have, one just, I'm going to get off the call. The one reality we have is that we're three, we're three months, four months.
Yes.
From the turning point. And we're, we're close. So we're not, we're not going to be sitting here in the summer and saying to you, go remote.
Correct.
We're, we're not, that's not going to be happening. We're sitting here saying the, the, the light at the end of the tunnel is, is three months away. And the goal right now is to keep as many people out of, away from COVID and out of hospitals and out of harm's way for those three months, four months.
Absolutely.
And that, that's, that's really what we're talking about here. I want to put that in perspective here. I understand these parents. I, I get it. I, my heart breaks for them. And, and I really wish we could open up the schools and open up the colleges and open up the stores and open up the restaurants. Uh, you know, my best friend's out of work. He's a restaurant manager for, he, he hasn't worked in nine months. Okay? But we're three months away. And we need to, we need to get from here to there. And the decisions we make now are, that you make as a board now, are going to impact what those next three months look like in your community. A year from now, this is going to be forgotten topic, you're, for the Board of Education, not for the life, but for the board. You're going to be worried, you're going to be back, you're smiling, but you're going to be worried about your SAT scores and where your kids are going to college and what your, what your ELA scores are and your next union contract and everything else that comes with running a school district. You're not going to have two doctors sitting on a board meeting telling you, you know, you have a crisis situation. That's, that's not going to be the case. So we're not going to tell you that. We're just telling, you know, whatever decision you make, we support. We're here. We're not, again, as I said, I, I don't have any skin in this game. Okay? And the only skin I do have is I'm trying to put myself out of work. Okay? What you do for the next three months matters because three months from now, the people that are alive are alive and they go to the doctor or their clinic or to Mario and they get their vaccine. And the people that aren't here don't. And it's really that, and all we're suggesting to you is even though you've done a great job, we know that Thanksgiving is not going to be a good situation. We've seen it, the, the projections are there. Every time we predicted that, that there's going to be a surge, it's happened. We all wanted no second surge. Remember, we talked about this all summer and let, here we are in November and it happened. We're suggesting to you that we're going to see this one more push. And we just have to get to March, April and May. And then we can all hope, smile, take off some of the masks and get back to life.
Yep, yep.
So that's the perspective I'm coming from. I, I'm not here to, to hurt these poor kids and parents. I, I just want to see them celebrate weddings and, and birthdays and graduations with their families. Okay? And all they have to do is stay alive for three more months.
That's right.
Okay? So when you're making that decision, when you hear me talking about this, because, because this has gotten a little personal over the last week, it's not. I'm not, I don't, I don't, I'm here to support whatever you do. I'm just trying to give you the best information you can to, to take care of your community, your kids. That's all this is about. And I understand that you have this very challenging decision to make because there is no perfect, there is no win here for everybody. The parent, either, there's going to be struggle on either side. Okay? There's going to be, if you, if you decide to go fully remote, we heard from parents tonight who are clearly going to struggle with that decision. If you don't go fully remote, we know that after Thanksgiving, there's going to be more cases. And some people are going to pay for that decision, not your decision, their decision to get together for Thanksgiving, have dinner, take the chance, roll the dice, will land up in our emergency rooms and in our hospitals. And we, we want to avoid that. So whatever you choose, I wish you the best of luck with this decision. We support whatever you, whatever you choose. And I just want you to understand where Dr. Ritter and I are coming from. This is not, you know, we, we don't take this decision lightly. Or recommendation.
Oh, thank you. Really appreciate that and everything that you, you've offered and all of your support. Thank you both very much for that.
All right. Well, thank you for having us and, and anything else. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For all your help. So much being here. And, and please do thank the commissioner for us.
You got it.
All right. Thank you. Good night now.
Good night.
Okay. Okay, um, Denise?
So I, yes, who said my name?
Hi, it's Greg. Yeah.
Hi.
I was, I was hoping that it might be okay to just circle back really quick to, um, Zade's comment just a, a few moments ago about the experience of students in the fully remote in September as it related back to last spring and then like where, what direction we're moving in.
No, thank you so much. Cause I, we are on the same page. I was, I was just going to comment on that. So perfect. Thank you.
Great. So I, I just wanted to say that, um, with somebody who's done work over a number of years with, um, with teachers and students in blended learning environments, um, it's a tremendous learning curve. And as a student, um, I just wanted to like acknowledge what you're saying. It is hard to go from a face-to-face classroom instruction every day with the types of structures and supports that exist there to different types of learning that require voice choice, um, authenticity, um, and really self-directedness that is a skill that you, that you learn. And, and we did this like by flipping a switch and then it was something that people had to learn. So I just wanted to say, you know, that I acknowledge that and that, um, the teachers and the students have done a tremendous job learning on a very steep curve. Um, and frankly, we've learned a heck of a lot from last spring to September. And then again, from September to where we sit now in November. Um, and that as a district, we're continuing to like learn those lessons, collect feedback, uh, propose improvements. Um, and, and really practicing continuous improvement around this. So I just wanted to assure you that we're working as a district actively right now on improvements based on the feedback from parents, students, teachers, administrators, um, our whole learning community. And, uh, as, as those improvements start to get implemented, we'll share more of that with you, um, and, and everybody else. But I just, I wanted to, uh, I wanted to recognize your comments and let you know that the type of remote learning that we do moving forward will carry with it all the lessons that we've learned, both from last spring, the improvements we made for September and the improvements we intend to continue to make.
Thank you. So, so to that point, I have a question if I may, um, Denise. So one, one of my biggest concerns or one of my, one of my thoughts about this, uh, whole question of, uh, uh, taking the action to go remote versus, uh, you know, staying the course and, um, and coming back live and, and so we, we've had a little experience and, uh, here in, in Hyde Park with, with having to switch to remote quickly um, as a result of positive cases. Um, and I've experienced it in Red Hook. We've had the same thing that, you know, we've, we've had to, the high school is, uh, um, today just finished, uh, their last day of, uh, of, as a result of some positive cases. And we've had positive cases at the elementary school, uh, primary, intermediate, as well as the, the middle school. Um, and one of the questions I would have in, in, and Aviva, we talked about this a little bit. So the challenges of that instantaneous, you know, flipping the switch from live in-person, uh, education, and I think everybody agrees that the best education, teaching and learning happens face to face. Teacher in the room, students in the room, obviously the best, the, the best environment. But what happens when we have to flip that switch? So are we better to plan that we can flip that switch for Monday and say, okay, look, we're going to, we're going to go remote and, and we can do it better by making this decision at home? Or is it, or are we just not going to do it that much better that, well, what's the worst case? We come back Monday with live and, you know, and it's a, and it's a roll of the dice, if you will. And I don't take it that casual. But the idea is that we come back, we bring the students back, we continue with the in-person education. And, and let's just see how it goes. Is it, you know, I agree, we don't control what our, we don't control what the population does. Is it, you know, I agree, we don't control what our, we don't control what the population does. We are going to be affected by what the decisions that everyone makes through this holiday season. Um, but at the same time, we're not, you know, there, there's no evidence. And that's not to say that there isn't a lack of evidence, but there's, there's no evidence that we are transmitting disease within the school system. We get a single case, a single positive test. We identify fifteen to fifty people who are in contact with this person. All of those people quarantined. But then we don't have, we, we don't have more po, you know, we're not here, we're not seeing more positive tests. We're not seeing people who are, um, showing, um, symptoms. Um, so, you know, I, I realize that that's not scientific, but at the same time, they do seem somewhat isolated that, uh, our school seems to be more reactive and having to be reactive because of cases that are brought to us and not so much that they're being spread within it. So getting back to my first question is really, are, are, do we gain anything from an educational standpoint? Continuity of learning, um, better planning by making the decision of when we're going to be out rather than simply waiting for it to happen? And whoever can answer that, I'd appreciate it. And, and I'd like to hear from our student as well, because I think that, you know, good indication of, of, of how that, you know, how disastrous is that when you hear that, okay, I can't go to school tomorrow?
So I guess, Zade, you're up again. Yeah.
So I can say that I had a physics test set for Friday. And we had it set that, okay, we're going to review Tuesday and then Wednesday and Thursday, we're going to do some practice tests. And then Tuesday, we had to go remote. So the test got pushed to Friday and it kind of threw, sorry, to Monday and it kind of threw off our schedule a little bit, but I feel like it wasn't as bad since we were able to know in advance. Like I think if we found, like say it was like a two-hour delay and we woke up and we saw it that morning, I think it would have more of an effect as, it would be more significant in altering what we're doing if we found out the morning of instead of the night before.
Um, Aviva, do you have any, or Greg, do you have any response for Perry?
And, and Greg might as well. Um, you know, I, I've heard from enough teachers and families that it, it can be a little confusing, um, to be, you know, hearing the night before that it's going to be remote for one day and then maybe later you hear, actually, it's going to be two weeks. You know, as we do more contact tracing and we realize we can't staff. Um, and also some confusion around is, is so it's remote. Is it like Wednesday or is it like September? Um, and that we have to be really clear about that scheduling. Um, you know, that said, it's really not insurmountable. Um, and I think, you know, instructionally, um, you know, we, we hear from families, the inequities that people have in terms of childcare and academic support at home. Um, so I, I think it's way against that as well.
Denise, can I, can I weigh in for a minute?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I wanted to, I want to start off, you know, Perry said it wasn't very scientific. I just want to assure him that his logic was perfectly consistent with great science. And, and the other thing, the other thing I wanted to say is my, my thinking about this is, is really almost done a 180 as I've spent more time thinking about it and looking at data and evidence. And, and I, and I very much appreciate the, the doctor's input and they bring an important perspective, but, but it is a perspective that they're being through their lens, which is the, the public health community transmission lens. I think there's no question, no question that we're going to see uh, an uptick or surge, whatever you want to call it, post Thanksgiving. No question. The real fundamental question is, what is the probability that transmission is occurring in the schools? The transmission and so therefore the, the school are contributing to that. And the evidence we have suggests, well, you know, they, they say we, we don't have testing, so we don't know if it's worse. We also don't know if it's, if the testing has taught us exactly that the right thing. We have no evidence, so we can't use that at all. What we can say is all of the upticks, all of the surges have been the result of extracurricular things. All of the things that we can point to were a result of things that happened outside of the school. We haven't seen a significant increase in, we haven't seen a lot of cases among, uh, faculty and staff who are less likely to be asymptomatic. We didn't see an increase when school started in September. So all of those bits of evidence seem to suggest that the CDC position that the transmission in the school is extraordinarily low compared to outside of the school. The other thing that I've seen is mining evidence that, that masks, social distancing and washing hands incredibly effective. And if we're doing that well in the schools, that's another reason to believe that the transmission rate is really, really low in the schools. Um, so I honestly have come to the position where I think, I think the probability that we would contribute to the surge. I, I feel for them. I feel for the, how hard they're working. I feel for their sense of impending doom. I just don't think the schools are going to be contributing to that. And on, on another note, I hate to be a, a, you know, a Debbie Deller, but I, I think the, the doctor's, um, uh, notion that will be done in three, three months is extraordinarily optimistic. Um, just given, given the logistical nightmare, the supply lines of all these vaccines, getting all the supplies they need to make the 250 million doses they need to get herd immunity in this country. Now, maybe Duchess County will be lucky and will be one of the first ones to get it and everyone can walk up, but I will be amazed if we're not thinking about this next, next September as well. And now I will shut up.
Um.
So, so this is my, so I was actually thinking the same thing, right? So yes, this is a big problem. And I don't see any action being taken in anything else, right? Where, where we know transmission is probably more likely, right? So nothing else is, is pausing or closing down yet, right? So, so that may happen for sure. But to me, when we look at taking an action on the school, which a, a, a pretty, pretty impactful, um, decision on a school that to me is, is a low rate of, um, exposure for people, right? Yes, there is a risk, right? I think it is, like as Mike said, it's a low risk. And I, I'm just curious as to why it's so, you know, we're, we're so focused on the school as a community versus other areas that are more, uh, likely to, to, to cause spread, right? And, 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 you know, Jeff, spot on, we can't control what happens, you know, with people, right? So even if we did do a pause and, and until that, people are still going to do what they want to do, right? So if the concern certainly is, um, certainly is, you know, the, the, the capacity in, in, in post-holidays, I don't think closing the school is really going to have an impact on that. I think that's going to happen anyway, right? That's, people are going to do what they want to do. And, you know, one of the things that Dr. Ritter said was, you know, he saw one parent and, you know, many grandparents, you know, it was probably because of people coming over. I mean, that's not a fair statement if you don't know the facts, right? Probably is not the right word to use when, when we're on such a sensitive topic, right? I mean, this has to be fact-based, not probably. So we'll know where they're getting it, right? Everybody that I know that's gone it hasn't been in the home. It's been at work or it's been, um, out and about in the community and hasn't been at home with, with family members. So that's just my comment. And I do have a question for Aviva. Whatever decision we, we arrive at, is it an all or nothing? Is it for the entire district? Or it seems to me, based on comments and, and certainly Zade's comments and, and some other kids that I've spoken to, um, that, you know, for example, high school students are more, um, able to, to handle the remoteness, right? They're, they're certainly older, they're used to being in front of the computer. You, you know, they don't need mom and dad sitting there, you know, beating them to, or sitting with them to, uh, you know, do schoolwork, whereas the younger, um, population and, and special needs population certainly need that, uh, more so, right? So do we have the ability to say, okay, we're going to go, you know, full remote for high schoolers and maybe middle school, but, you know, K through five and any special needs would still be in this model that we're doing today? Do we have that ability?
We do. Um, we have that ability. We, um, over the summer, when we looked at different models, we looked at all different models. Like if we had remote at the secondary and brought in elementary students four days a week and spread them out for social distance throughout the district, you know, and, and went in favor of our current plan. I think districts that are doing different models, there's pros and cons to each. You know, we, we really, um, unless you can have everyone in every day, um, there's real losses and real risks of, of learning loss. One thing I'll say about the high school, although certainly high school students are more capable of learning remotely and, and some have been very successful, there is concern that there are a lot of students that are not being successful, um, when it's all remote. That really were hard to reach, um, despite many efforts, um, really are not completing their work. We're looking at some significant, um, concern over failure rates, um, now that we're back to grading. So we don't have all that data in yet since the first quarter just ended. Um, but I have to make that plea that, you know, um, you know, we look at a successful high school student here and sort of picture, or maybe we have our own students at home who can handle that kind of thing, but we have a lot who are not doing that well. Um, so I'll say that about, about secondary. The other thing that we do have a choice about is it doesn't have to be all or nothing all the way through January 15th or working all the way through January 15th in person. You know, it could be two weeks at a time, um, and looking at the data. Um, however, you know, in thinking about, again, the challenges to family, I, I would prefer not to put the community through this every two weeks. Um, and, and even though, and, and I'll say, one of the reasons I really wanted to have this, in a, this discussion so publicly with everyone is because it is really, um, difficult to know, hearing the, these medical opinions about what's happening in the community versus what the governor said on Sunday about schools, you know, being safe and should be open, what the CDC is saying. And so we're looking at, um, you know, two really different points of view, um, both based on science, just looking at different factors. So a, as one of the community who at least know, you know, have all the information that we have, um, to be aware of, you know, all the factors in this, in this decision.
And can I, can I say what, what you, what you said a minute ago, Aviva, is one that I'm particularly concerned about? And that is, that's sort of the achievement gap. In that, yes, there are some students who are doing really, really well under these conditions, but, but there are some who are really struggling. And, and I worry that those are the students from families, um, with, with fewer means who are already, um, suffering some achievement gap. And I, and I'd hate to see that get exacerbated. And I don't, and I don't know, and, and I don't know that that would be restricted to just students in middle school.
One other question I had was in relationship to, um, our teachers. And what are we seeing or are we seeing, uh, uh, an increased absentee rate um, as a result of, of anything, you know? And, and, and not that we have teachers who are COVID positive, but are we seeing more and more? Cause I, I do believe that there's a mental strain on our teachers at this point. And I question what, uh, what impact we may be seeing, um, you know, on a daily basis, uh, you know, let's say if we took a year ago today, what would have the average number of teachers, uh, that were out on any given day be versus what, what do we have now? Um, and I know that there's a huge shortage, shortage of, um, of qualified substitutes. So my next concern would be is how many classes or do we have any classes that are not being properly staffed? Do we have classes where we have students in the classroom and we've got an aide basically babysitting, if you will? Um, uh, you know, I've, I've heard those types of stories. So can, can you tell us what's happening in our district in that way?
Yeah, I, I can definitely send along, um, the actual data because I've been tracking teachers who have to quarantine because they've been in school when there's a positive case, which is different. I've not heard concern about a lot of teachers calling out sick. I really have not. Um, so there doesn't seem to be any kind of large issue in that way, but I will look at it because it, it may be that there is an increase and it's just not noticeable, um, by situation. Um, so we can look at people calling out sick when it's not for quarantine. I do know that some people have had to call in sick because they're caring, um, for a child who's been quarantined in another district. Um, or for, you know, a quarantine-related care situation. So I want to include those in, in the COVID-19 pile. Um, you know, it's important data, but it isn't somebody calling in sick in, in a way. Um, but I, but it is exhausting work they've been doing since March. Um, I will say that. Um, and you wouldn't know it by their smiling faces when they're with kids. Um, but you know it when they, when they talk to you about how they're feeling it. It gets pretty emotional because it's, you know, it's exhausting and it is a, a ton of new learning. Um, and sometimes thanks. So I, I think they, they got thanked a lot tonight, but I want to do it one more time. Um, our teachers and, and all staff have just been working tirelessly, um, for our students, for our families, um, just going the extra mile every day. So I, I want to just take this opportunity to thank them. And the administrators are just heroes, you know?
Along, along those lines, I had a question with our teachers. And, and you hear stories where people are working, you know, 12 hours a day, seven days a week. Are we providing any additional support to figure out, um, you know, what, why the, you know, what, what is, why are they working so much? What can we do to help alleviate that? I mean, is it, is it bringing on extra TAs or, or, or what? I, I don't know what the answer is, but have we done an analysis as to why this? Because certainly i- if, if, if they're working that long, that long, you know, thanks only goes so far, they're going to get burnt out, right? And we're going to have a major problem if we don't give them some relief in some fashion, right? And, and again, that could be in the form of, of TAs or, or as a technical assistance, right? I heard somebody say that, you know, they struggle with, you know, creating PowerPoint presentations, which they've never had to in their career, right? So, uh, what do, what are we doing in that area?
I see Greg and Linda raised their little hands and their rock.
Yes, I saw that too. I saw that too. Um, does anybody have an answer for Mike though, before we?
I, I just, Mike, I wanted to say maybe a little bit about that. Um, in a, in a previous role, we spent, um, upwards of seven months training teachers how to do blended learning in a really effective way. Seven intensive months. And we had students and families who opted in to that type of experience. And what I can tell you after, you know, five years of working with teachers and kids is that was hard in that scenario. This is really hard now. Every one of our teachers, and I'm just going to make a generalization, even though there's like danger in that. Um, but I've spoken to enough people here and around the region. When you develop a skill set and a way of doing things that's effective, and then all of a sudden those things don't translate in a digital world, it's like a collective, um, experience in our field where people are feeling like first-year teachers again. And if I like rewound in my mind what that was like, that was like writing lesson plans every night. That was trying things, failing at it, reevaluating and then trying it again. That's the experience that our administrators and teachers are having right now. And because they're so dedicated to our students and to our school, they're staying up all night writing the lesson plan over and over again. They're refining their skill and saying, wow, I didn't know how to do that or I thought this skill would, you know, translate over. I mean, I, I relied heavily on my relationships with students. Relationships don't translate the same way through a mask. Um, they don't translate the same way through the webcam. So I, I mean, if I were to venture an educated guess as to why people are working that long and that hard, it's because they care and because it's not easy. And they're being asked, our students are being asked to do this too. They're being asked to develop skill sets that they haven't had to rely on because somebody was elbow to elbow with them in the classroom before. So, um, I think that's what's happening.
I get that. I get that. But are we, are we providing any assistance or help for those who are, who are in need of help, right? That's, I guess, my question. I understand the problem that, you know, they're adjusting and they're stepping up and, you know, all that good stuff. But I, I do hear some pain by a lot of teachers. Um, and are we doing anything to help that is, is really my question?
Yeah.
Like, for example, I work- Like, for example, I work.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I, I work at IBM and early on they recognized, sorry, I, I, it's kind of breaking up, but early on they recognized people were getting burnt out and they forced everybody to take vacation. They said, everybody has it, you know, we're in the middle of the summer. Everybody's working a lot more than normal to try to reach out to clients, et cetera. And they forced vacation on us, right? They said, you need a break, you need vacation. So I'm not saying, you know, that's the answer in, 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 in our situation, but are we providing help in any fashion?
I can answer that in some part, which is to say the technology department has been offering, you know, one-to-one assistance, all sorts of trainings for teachers, for staff in using the technology. Principals, I see them using trauma-informed practices, listening to their staff, trying to support, you know, their emotional wellbeing while they're under all this additional stress. I, I think the challenge is that everyone in the system is stressed. So when I say, you know, the technology department, like, wow, you know, like what they've been doing since this pandemic, you know, and that they have this energy to share. I, I want to support them, you know? And, and the same with the principals supporting their staff. Well, the principals are, are working overtime, you know, we all are. So I, I think that's really one of the challenges. And I, I think about other times when, you know, like in a marathon. Well, that's a bad example. The kind of a relay race where, you know, like people can take a break and someone else takes the baton. You know, thinking about ways we can give each other short breaks and, and get back in the race. And Linda, you raised your hand.
Thank you, Aviva. I had raised my hand when Perry asked about the teacher subs. I have gathered some data. I don't have, my data isn't about the absences, but it's about the utilization of subs. And for the three months that we've been in school this year, we've used about 70% of the, of the subs that we used for the same time period last year. Remember, we were 100% remote in September. So to me, that shows that we are probably using subs at this rate as we did last year. So unless we have a lot of unfilled absences or positions or vacancies each day, then I don't see that we're experiencing teachers calling out any more than they would have in any other year.
Yeah, I guess that, that would be part of the question is whether or not there are qualified subs available.
So, yeah, actually, thank you. So Linda, you really answered the part of my question I would have had to research. The other part I can, which is that we've had an issue for years where we have to ask teaching assistants to stop providing academic intervention services at the elementary level or even come out of their co-teaching classroom to cover classes for teachers because there are no subs available at elementary. At secondary, we do have in a pinch the option of asking a teacher to spend their duty subbing for another teacher. And that we are doing currently. At the high school, when we were able to open after one day, it was in large part to our teachers covering for each other. So again, you know, very grateful to have that system in place or we could not have opened at FGR. And so we have a couple of leaves where there was a certified sub and they left and we're, you know, in the process of hiring another one. You know, but, but that is not out of the ordinary that we might have one situation that's hard to fill. It's not a long-term leave that we can't just get someone who would be happy to work for half a year. So we had sub issues before. So I, I think that that seems to be, you know, to answer your question and, and one of the callers, we're not seeing extraordinary amount of teachers calling out or, or getting subs.
Good, good.
Okay, did, Linda, did you have, did you have something else you wanted to say? I just wanted to make sure that we touched on everything that you.
Oh, no, I forgot to lower my hand.
Oh, no. Okay, good.
I'm good.
That's okay.
Denise, I have one other question for Aviva. And that is, um, this conversation that, that we're having, any other districts in the county having similar discussions? What, what, what's happening in your director's meeting or your superintendent's meetings?
Right, everyone is very interested in this conversation.
Yes, they are.
That's for sure.
That's what I'm hearing, yeah.
As far as I know, no one else is having a forum in this way, though I know people are gathering information in different ways. You know, I, yeah, I mean, there's some risk involved in making this a public discussion.
Yeah, I, I actually, Perry got a lot of feedback, you know, that we were calling this meeting. And, you know, a lot of people watching and waiting. And I'm not saying that we're, we're taking a lead, but I really felt strongly, and I know Aviva felt strongly, that we, we needed to have this conversation. We needed to discuss this. We needed to hear from the community. We needed, we needed to weigh the many pros and cons that, that are crazy between all of the different age groups of the students and the families in our school district. And, yeah, I think a lot of people are kind of waiting to see what we do, but I, I don't care about that. I, I'm actually glad that we're having this conversation amongst us to make this decision for our district, not based on what other, what other schools are doing. So I don't know, you know, guys, you know, we're, we're, we're being watched. And I, you know, I think I'll just take this moment now to just, to just say that I was, you know, taking careful notes. I've been listening and, and everything, but to me, it, you know, it's not the same for our high school and our middle school and our elementary schools. And I might have a very specific perspective on all of this, but, but I lack things. And what was really kind of nice is that, you know, I, I need things pointed out to me. You know, I need to hear from people, to hear a different side of things, you know, that, that are different than the way it would have been when my kids were little. I'm constantly thinking about, well, what would I be doing if my kids are in elementary school? What would I be doing if they were in middle school or high school? And, or a freshman versus a senior? I mean, gosh, I mean, it's, you know, it's all I think about. And I think the question here before us right now is, do we, and this has always been what it was for me, do we think it's better to be proactive and have, and, and say, hey, we're going to be remote for these six weeks or whatever it is so that you can plan, you can plan your daycare for your little ones or you can plan your, you know, just everything so that you can plan? Do we say it? Or do we say, you know what? We can keep, we can keep limping along, right? You know, maybe we won't have to close, you know? Or if everybody's okay with the one-day notice, you know, you're only going to get that, you're not going to get any notice if you, if you're going to need daycare tomorrow, you know, or, or something like this. And I think, so I think the question was that. For me, it was, do we want to be proactive and give people this notice? Or do we want to continue the way that we're going? And I guess I'll just keep going with what I think. So what I heard overwhelmingly is that people would rather be in lives, teaching, and play it by ear and see what we can do. It may be out of our hands. We could come back next week and find out that we have to close three schools, you know? We could come back, you know, we, we, we could end up having to close for whatever reasons. That could happen, you know? I mean, but I, I, I thought what I was hearing was that people would rather take that gamble and keep their kids in, in live instruction. And that just leads me to, you know, obviously, you know, I was listening to what everybody said. And I think, you know, my philosophy is always, you know, cater to the person that's the most needy. And, you know, if, if it's working great for you, if, 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 you know, great, you know, great. But if it's not working for you, then we'll have to work with you to try to figure out how we can make it work for you. So we, we have to cater to the most needy. And I think the most needy, and, you know, I hope I don't get blasted for this. You know, I know that we have, we have students that are struggling at every level. I, I know that and I want to, I want to, I want to reach out to them. So I, I'm not trying to disrespect any of that. But I think our elementary students are the, the least able to grasp all this, you know what I mean? And, and with the computer screen and the online learning. And even though I love our online learning, I think we're, I think we're working really hard on all that stuff. I think we have to cater to the people who are struggling in this system the most. And to me, those people that are struggling the most are the people that really want us to be live as long as possible. So, all right, so I said it. So I said, I said what I think. I don't know what y'all think, so I got it.
Denise, I'm going to have to agree with you, Denise, because I'm hearing a lot from the special needs parents who are really struggling with this and struggling with online learning. And they're struggling just on the concepts of helping their student or their child with it. And they're, they're, I hear a lot lately. But now, I'm hearing it from elementary parents also who are the younger age elementary, who are struggling trying to get these concepts across with their children. And they're talking about, bird out, the teachers are struggling to re-. These parents are struggling to become tutors and, in some cases, teachers for their students, for their children, I mean. And they are struggling trying to match that and their jobs and everything else. So, yes, I do think we need to take that into consideration.
Yeah, I think we've, you know, we, we've put protocols in place. We've got an administration and, and all the leadership that we have in our district that has put everything in place for us to move forward in a successful manner. I think you, we really just need to keep forging forward until we can. You know, and I think that it may come simply by the numbers. Will we get to the point where we have to start testing? If, if, if we become a yellow zone? I think, you know, I think that it's going to be a game changer at that point. And, and it won't be our choice as to what we, we're doing at that point. But right now, I think that we continue to go forward with the plan that we have. It's a day-by-day effort. And, and I think that that's where it is. And that, that, that's where I am as well.
And this is Mike. I, I agree. I, I think we have a great system in place, a lot of checks and balances. And we also, Aviva, correct, if, if, if somebody is not comfortable with the, the way we have it, they still have the option to go fully remote, right? Right, so, so those parents that aren't comfortable with this and don't want their kids in school or, or maybe high-risk at home and don't want any exposures, that's an option for them, right? So, you know, I, I would, I would say continue with what we have. And for those folks that are nervous or, or, you know, are a bit more concerned about, you know, the in-person aspect for whatever reason, they could opt out and do remote. And that, and that mechanism is in place today.
Yes, that's true.
Okay.
I, so, so, Zade, no disrespect, but, you know, I, I, I really value what you said. I hope you realize that. It's not that I don't think that there's value in that. I just think that you have the ability to overcome. There's just a little easier than, than others. So that's just where I'm coming from. But I hope that you'll continue to excel because I know you will. And, and let us know what we can do better, you know? Please keep telling us that, you know?
And, 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 Aviva, one of the things I heard today from a student was that they're the only ones in the class. Everybody else in the class opted for being remote. So it's just this person in the, in the, in the teacher, which makes it very awkward and, and, you know, it's just not a good teaching environment to be just on one-on-one. So maybe look at situations like that and do something, you know, special for. If the popularity of a particular class goes, you know, below a threshold, maybe we do something, I don't know, maybe do something to, to think about.
Yeah, we have some real differences where some, you know, we do have cases like that for a period. And then we have others where it's, you know, the entire cohort is in. And we have up to 15 students socially distant, you know, in one period, you know, at, at the high school. So it's, it's really, you know, kind of all over the map.
So what are we, are we all? I mean, we didn't really have a vote, like, we don't have a vote on this or anything like that for the meeting, but we, but we needed to come to a consensus, right? We all needed to kind of be on the same page. And I, I feel like we've done that. I mean, does everybody feel comfortable? You know, I, I think we're on a good path.
Denise, there's a comment that Linda just made from Shelby and Elliot.
Oh, I didn't.
You may want to just.
Yes, I will. I, I didn't see it. Let me see.
Yes, and they asked that we mentioned that we do have EAP. We have a really robust EAP program for staff and inclusion to other benefits that people can use. Linda might have more details, but, but staff should really have all that information and the personnel department can help with that, too.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking that. I'm glad they brought that up. Thank you. I loved that. So, okay, so I think we're, we're all saying the same thing. I, I feel like we're all feeling the same about you were going to stay as long as possible and.
Well, we hear, I don't think we heard from Ed or Carl.
Yeah, I was just thinking the same thing.
Did I, did I, did I just hold those right over them? I'm sorry.
Uh, this is Ed. I hope everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. So sorry, I'm literally on the road. But I have to agree with what everybody is saying. You know, to me, if the governor, the CDC say kids, it's the safest place is to be in the schools. I know my kids, they want to be in school. They say to me every day, and I'm hearing a lot from the community. So I agree with what other people are saying to try to keep schools open for as long as possible with parents having the choice of remote.
Okay, great. Thanks, Ed. So much for calling us on your way back. I appreciate it. And Carl, what are your thoughts?
All over the place. You know, I, A, I would love the kids to be in school. B, I'm thinking that it, maybe it's fortuitous. We have a board meeting two weeks from tonight that we could, we could take a respite and revisit this two weeks from now. And we're not testing. We, we won't know we have a problem until after the fact. And that concerns me. But, you know, based on, on all of the information we got and the fact that everybody has the option to keep their kids home and it's elementary and especially special ed, I think the, the more time they can get, the better off they are. So I think I would, I would have to agree with doing whatever we can do to, to stay open as long as we can.
Okay.
So, did everyone?
I don't think so. Did everybody agree?
But is that, yeah, it sounds like there is a consensus with the board. And, and I don't want to hold the community in suspense. I, I, I support what you're saying. I, I think it is, like someone said earlier, you know, there is no right decision because there are so many unknowns right now and we can't predict the future. But we have this opportunity to hear the community speak and, and hear the experts speak. And, you know, so the decision is to keep open as long as we can in as many days and as many buildings as we can with the hybrid model. Again, we are continuing to work on what the teaching and learning look like for students and continue to make those improvements and to support our staff the best that we can during these really, really trying times. So I, I will send a school messenger out when this meeting ends and let people know that we are continuing. You know, our plan is to open up after the, the weekend in the hybrid model with the green cohort as planned. And that, you know, if they're. And that, you know, if there's any changes that happen, that we'll notify the community. And our next board meeting is, you know, official board meeting is the 10th. We have an executive session on the 2nd. So that'll be the next time there's a time for public discussion.
Yes, and please utilize the public discussion. I was really excited to hear so many people call into the forum. I hope that this, you know, galvanizes people to participate and let us know what your concerns are because we truly want to hear it. So thank you. And thank you to the board and thank you, Aviva, and our whole administration. Thank you. But we are in official meeting, so.
Can I just add, we opened the call with, you know, people in the community already thinking, as you mentioned, it was a done deal. So that it was closed or, you know, we were going remote and-
Oh yeah, absolutely. Nobody believed. Everybody believed this was us up. You know, what is it, a horse and pony show? Is that what they call it?
Right. So hopefully this is, you know, a little bit of a message to the community that, you know, don't believe Facebook, right? You know, we do these things that are meaningful and with purpose, right? You know, it's not just for a dog and pony show. So-
Dog and pony.
Please don't use Facebook as your source of information because probably are, probably a good chance it's not correct. So, you know, this was a very good meeting tonight, I think.
Yeah, and I appreciate all of you for that. I'm sorry, Viva, I just want to say, jump on mic, you know? I appreciate this board so much. And I say it all the time and I'm going to say it publicly. I have been involved in so many organizations and been on boards all my life. I've been a volunteer all my life. This is without question just the best group of people I could ever work for with. And I think it's important for our community to sit back and realize the value they have with this group of people. We are so lucky. We're so thoughtful. We have such great minds on this board that really, really care about our community and our school. So please feel free, again, to reach out to us. We truly want to hear what you have to say. And with that, I'm going to, I'm going to stop, but I just want to say thank you. This was a long night. It was called on short notice. And, you know, we all rose to it and I'm so grateful for that. So thank you. And Aviva, I'll let you go and then I'm going to, I'm going to close the meeting, so.
I want to do two things. One, Mike Correll wanted me to make sure to thank the board on behalf of FDR for all you're doing. And I'm sure he speaks for the whole leadership team and all the principals and all of us. I want to thank you and I want to let, just say to the community that, you know, we we respect you, we respect your opinions. And also over the holiday, we want everyone to be safe and do your part after everything you heard tonight.
And have a wonderful holiday with your family.
And have a wonderful holiday.
Okay. Do we need exactly, we don't need exactly this, right? Ken, I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved, Mike.
Second, Jeff.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any points? No. Thank you, everybody. The meeting's adjourned. Have a happy Thanksgiving, everybody.